This conference will now be recorded.
Be the best choice for the Super Bowl.
I made a comment earlier, I think the best place to have a holiday tech. Keep them in and built for you.
Yeah. Perfect. They were ready.
Well, we'll open this annual planning session. Tell me you have the floor to pick us through this.
Great, thanks, sir. Appreciate everybody's time and attendance and willing to work through all of this stuff. You know, as you all that know me, this is kind of my favorite time of the year, the budget session and team planning and putting it all and making it all make sense and looking towards the future. So bear with me as I go through all of this, but I can appreciate it. You have a packet there in front of you that kind of has all of the materials that we're going to go through, including the agenda and the order of things and certainly, well, hopefully, everybody out there has a copy of it. We do have Councilwoman Foster is online, so please try to speak into the mic so that she can hear and participate. She plans on being here in person right after noon so that she can participate in person in the scoring or the ranking process. So again, for the department heads or department directors, there's a mic out there, so if we do have conversation, please either come up, grab the mic, or pass the mic around, or whatever you need to do to get to a mic again so that she can hear. So with that, unless anybody has anything else, we'll go through. The first thing on the agenda is to review the status of the FY23 goals. And please make sure that this is all conversational, so interrupt, ask questions, let's discuss any time that you want to discuss. And thank you all for the breakfast. Thank you, too, for bringing in the brisket and gravy, and thanks to Tabitha for setting up the rest of it and all of that. Please, you won't offend me if you want to continue to eat, or get up and go get something more to eat, or run to the restroom, or anything like that. With that, we'll get started. The planning session this time, last year, we went through and scored 13 items from the general fund, and so we'll just go through those in order. So what came out, number one, was move the fire department to the Loggers, and that has been done. The fire department are all now members of the Loggers. We are continuing to work on transferring the legacy plan to management under Loggers, but basically, the cost of that, the extra cost of doing that, is we still have to amortize out the old legacy plan and make good on those past promises. So that's going to cost us about $250,000 a year for the next 15 years to make that Number two was restore the dangerous building demolition funding. The year before, we had cut that funding back, but then this year, we funded again at $100,000. The neighborhood revitalization seed money through the 353, the redevelopment corporation, we funded another $200,000 this year. Number four was police recruitment and spending, and again, that was funded, and I'm not sure where we're at on spending that, but it has been helpful. We've used a lot of that. Police non-lethal weapon expansion, again, that was done. It was done at a lesser rate than what we had proposed, or what you all scored, but we were able to get that done at 16.5. Downtown bike study to expand the 353 area, we did fund that in the original budget at $25,000, but then when we were starting to look at some of the economic conditions, we delayed that. But it is something that we've kind of turned loose and need to get that going again. Add fire staff vehicle, it is on order. Unfortunately, with the market the way it is right now, I'm not sure if it'll get here before 331, but it is on order. Retail recruitment, we budgeted $60,000, but then when we went out for bids, we had nobody bid, and it was also one of the things that we kind of held back on, that we have no bid. So we'll talk about that again for this year, to see what your all's pleasure is on moving forward with that. The police drone program expansion, that again, was funded, and those are on order, correct? Those three are canceled. Those are, okay, so new updates, three here. Branding, we budgeted $75,000, but for the most part, we delayed doing anything on that. We talked about going out for bids on somebody to manage that for us, and we just haven't put that together.
Part of the two is wanting to get the website completed.
Yes.
And then that was going to be.
Yes.
We were going to use branding to drive traffic to the website.
Yes, there you go. And the website is close to getting out there and running. The medical UTV, you saw again, Chief Berwin's strategic plan, and we'll talk some more about that later, that he is proposing that again this year. What we did is we did do a PD, purchased one, and in the short term, at least, kind of doing a shared use for parades and those kinds of things, which at the Christmas parade, it was pretty useful for us, to use quite a bit. Cemetery 64 Nish Columbarium, that is on order. There you go, Reverend. It's probably going to be here next fiscal year, probably summer-ish.
It's in April.
Okay.
It's in April.
But we have, well, we will this year, get the foundation and all of that kind of stuff in there, so part of that will be expended, even if the Nish doesn't show up until after April 1. And then finally, number 13 came in as the city health department, and that was not funded. We went through that, had quite good a discussion during the budget work sessions, and ultimately, did not fund that. For transportation, there was only two items that were prioritized, and we have the parallel taxiway, and we had proposed to you that that was really, we didn't have the grant funds available to us anyway, that was really on a four-year plan, so it was not included in the current year budgets, but it was included in the five-year capital improvements plan, as well as reconstruct the 523 runway, or the crosswinds runway, and it is not funded, and at that time, was on a major plan. Capital improvements Fund initiatives, we prioritized 25 items per capital improvement. The sidewalk funding, it was funded at basically $1.1 million, $600,000 of local funds, and a $500,000 grant, we were able to secure that grant, and so we're working through the process to get all of that done. Thompson Boulevard Mill and Overlay, that project is done, it was funded at $100,000, we came in to fund under that. The fire squads, we had put those in the budget, and there are two on order, and then we'll talk later about the third one. Sidewalk on 65 Highway 7th to Liberty Park, that one again, is in process, and it's number four. Number five was the central fire replacement design, and again, that's in process. We have, the architects are hired, and they're working on that. We've got design sure that's coming up next week.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. We don't, yeah. Number six came in as a three-way tie. 32nd and Limit Lane additions, that was funded, but that, if you'll recall, that's a project that we need MoDOT to partner with, and MoDOT's not ready to move forward, although I believe we've made some progress in convincing them that that is a good project. So, and it was rated number three, I think, by the Pioneer Trails, the Regional Planning Commission, so we're getting at least some elevated attention to that. We have three stormwater drainage projects, we funded that, and then during the year, we learned of some ARPA funds that are available through the State Department of Natural Resources, and so we have applied for a grant, and so in addition to the 665, we now have a $2.2 million grant that's over in the next couple of years, so we'll talk again some more about that when we look at the funding. Alley reactivation, we funded at $250,000, and we've done at least one alley, the one between.
Second and Third.
Yeah, between Second and Third, and Ohio, I'm going to move, right? 50 Highway and Winchester Lane additions, we funded at $350,000. The sidewalk on State Fair Boulevard, 50 Highway, the Third to 65 Highway, it was not funded, this is kind of where we cut off, and we're not able to pull in the rest of these things in that priority. Engineer rehabilitation, 16th to 24th, Winston Road Rehabilitation, Grant to 32nd. Downtown streetlight purchase, came in at number 13 and was not funded. Number 14 was the bikeway, Third Street, from Katy Depot to Liberty Park, that was originally not funded, however, as you all learned at the last few council meetings, you all passed the resolution to approve us applying for a grant for that, and then at the last council meeting, we had notice of that award, and we approved the grant, and so now it's in the design process to get that done.
I have a question about that now.
Okay.
Well, that goes from to the driveway of the center, or just to Liberty Park driveway?
Hopefully, clear to the hacker, but we'll look at that when we design it, to see if we've got, see how far the money will go. 16th and Winchester's movement, are extending that Winchester from the roundabout there at 16th to Zacko Wachia, that was not funded at number 15. Number 16, the complete streets, as discussed in the comprehensive plan, New York to Lemon along 16th Street, that whole area, that was not funded at 8.75 million. Bikeway, Amtrak Depot to Katy Depot was not funded. Harding and Bootville Broadway to the airport, that's really a projection to open up the traffic area to get from the airport, and also then the Bootville across over to where the railcar is, and hopefully someday a transport facility, that was not funded. 19 came in again as a tie, a two-way tie, State Fair Boulevard, Main to Pro Energy Rehab, and that included roundabouts at State Fair Boulevard and Main, as well as State Fair and Pro Energy, Cherry Tree, that area. We did fund the Mill and Overlay project, and that was completed, but we did not fund the roundabouts. The parking lots, Second and Osage, Pacific and Ohio, and Third and Osage, we did not fund those in the budget as they were proposed, but if you all will recall, we did, we were able to fund the Mill and Overlay apartment out of the Transportation Department, and so with that new equipment, we were able to utilize where we were under budget in other areas to just purchase the asphalt, and we were able to do those in-house. So we were able to get those smaller projects accomplished with that newer equipment, plus it gave them a way to kind of learn the new equipment on a parking lot, which is less important for you to have the bridge, if you will. Traffic lights at 65 and Zacko Wachia, that was not funded. 50 Highway and Katy Trail overpass widening, that was not funded. Monument and weight finding signings, that was not funded as well. 65 Highway and Main ramps, again, a project to partner with MoDOT, and that was not funded in order to get that fixed. Connect Pro Energy Drive to Oak Row, again, that was not funded, coming in at number 25. A few other notable updates, we had, you know, the comprehensive plan was completed in 2021, I'm trying to remember, around June or August is when it was actually adopted and running, so, and that has been a great plan for us to lay out and keep focused on where we're headed here. The housing study was completed, and in participation with White Manor Area Leadership Council, gave us some additional information about where and what kind of housing that we need. Victorian Towers Historic District process is in process. There was another grant, and just your last couple of meetings, you approved expanding that grant. The Main Street concepts have been re-engaged, and they're moving along, so Leah's doing a great job of getting people excited about that again, so Leah and John both are working that process. The CBD is reinvigorated, they've got a lot more people involved in the process, and things.
And they recently just changed the name from downtown to the alliance to civilian Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
So I think future paperwork and advertising, you'll start seeing that name change.
Yep, as well as they kind of got some branding, but not kind that they did, utilized a branding expert that came down, that was under the grant to the Main Street, so, yeah. So hopefully, that'll expand that even more, keep it going. The Christmas lights were expanded, the public-private partnership event pavilion was completed and brought online, it's being used and doing very well. The Scott Joplin Festival was one of the big events there that was well-received, and by all reports that I've heard, that everybody really appreciated that. The parking lot expansions that we talked about, the commercial demolitions downtown that we were able to get done, the downtown properties that we've acquired for redevelopment, and then also the Paul Brun grant, and that is in process. I know John's still working with the granting agency on the criteria for approval.
We have the grant agreement on the upcoming due, but if they're done, if they're reused, just waiting on the final blessing.
But again, will be a huge, huge help to our goals there. We've updated some of our codes, including our lodging ordinance, our vacant structure ordinance, the nuisance property ordinance, the administrative search warrants, and the recreational marijuana, just here recently. So some major code changes that you all worked through, and provided additional tools to help us accomplish our goals here. Joint dispatch has been implemented, meat checking has been implemented, we're still working with animal shelter and the code enforcement, is code enforcement going now? No, I don't think so. Abasement costs have been added to the tax bills, which should help us at least recover more of the taxpayers' money there, where we've had to do a basin. We've been working to clean titles on properties that we've had to acquire during the tax sale, because we are really the only ones in the position to clean up those titles and get them to redevelopment. The Citizens Police Academy has been going and going quite well, again, helps us engage the citizens and develop relationships and those kinds of things that have us. Problem-oriented policing program has been implemented, and the crime resolution unit has been very active again this year, and is making a huge difference for us. The fire plant, pre-planning and inspections are caught up, as well as the training and the documentation of all of that kind of good stuff. You know, as you heard from Chief Berwin's presentation, you know, all of that's important to our citizens from the ISO and the training, as well as just knowing that we're prepared to come help if they need us. We've had several developments that we were able to do, and I won't go through all of those, but again, had several of those developments, we continue to be lucky enough to have, to be growing economically. The look there at the building permits and how those have gone over the last few years, and of course, there's some notes there for you, that, you know, a few of yours kind of stand out, and then of course, 2018, if we would have put Nucor in there, the graph wouldn't really, it would dwarf the rest of them, so the graph really wouldn't make a lot of sense, so we took those out. But again, we had another good year, down a little bit from what probably our higher years have been, but it's really still above about average as far as the number of permits that we're issued. And then we have what I call the game changers, or the things that I think are the major items that really have changed the landscape and have given us the opportunity here to create momentum and to continue to ride that minimal momentum, or the wave, as I call it, because if you fall off the wave, then you don't get those opportunities back very often. So as long as we've got the wave going, we need to ride it. So economic development success, as you heard from Jessica Craig, our Economic Development Director, over the last six years, we, through those efforts, have created 958 new jobs, and these are just the ones that have been announced, formally announced. And then along with that, I think just as important, or maybe even more important, is the 1,645 retained jobs through the expansion. And I think that speaks volumes about what we are doing, or what we're able to accomplish, because those folks know the community better than the new ones coming in. You know, and they chose to do their expansion through here where they already know what's going on, they know the market, they know what we're doing, what we're trying to help them accomplish, and then also staying out of their way once we set the right tone or the right economic environment for them. So again, I think that's equally or even more important than the new jobs that are created. And then along with that was $408 million worth of capital expenditures that they've put into the economy, and that's part of why you see the rest of the economy growing, is not only the capital expenditure, but the added payroll for those folks, and that money, you know, the experts tell me, and I don't know how they come up with this, but they tell me every dollar that's created turns seven times, so you can multiply that times seven, and that's what they say, that's the impact to the economy, so. And then, of course, the Hacker Community Center, their grand opening was next March, so we're coming up on the year anniversary of that being open, and that is making a huge impact on people's lives and the community as a whole. The rail spur, again, helping to, we've got the anchor tenant, we've got the $10, almost $1 million, or $100,000 of grants that we have been working through to get that rail spur done, we still have, still trying to work on the transport facility, we still have about a million four, million five of that grant left, and that's what we're trying to get done. The Katy Trail connection was finally completed, and again, making a difference. Streetscape on Ohio and Pacific was finally, all of those spaces have been complete, and again, gives us a foundation to build upon the downtown development. The airport hangars, and it's plural now, because we've got the 65 by 65 airport hangar complete, and so that again, has made a difference in what services we're able to offer through our airport, and it's really turned our airport into where it's almost an enterprise fund, where the operations are funded through fees, as opposed to tax dollars. The tax dollars still augments the capital expenditures that we need to do, as well as, but most of that is 90% grant-funded from the Fed, so. So again, that's, you know, doesn't sound like a whole lot, and sometimes we, you know, the airport's out away from the center of town by design, so we kind of forget about that, but it does have a huge impact on the economy and the community. The Allon Howard Tech Center, again, a game changer for our economic development efforts. When we are sitting across the table from folks that are considering coming to our community as thought creators, that is a huge asset for us to talk about, and it really gets their attention. And then also to keep our current folks operating and efficiently, is to train their staff. The water and sewer master plans have been completed, and we're working on implementing, and you'll see some of that stuff there, the ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act funding, you know, we, our local allocation was 4.3 million, and then we've been able to leverage that to secure some additional grants, the $2.2 million was the most notable there for the stormwater grant, the very next one. So again, that's something we've been struggling, I don't know, that master plan was done before I got here, and we've been struggling to pick off one or two projects a year, and so this is going to let us basically fulfill all of those projects that we've got left, so. The Paul Brun grants that we talked about there, as well as the CBGT grant, Community Development Block grant, the Urban Redevelopment Plan, and we're working through that, of course, the comprehensive plan that I mentioned as well, as the branding. With that, I'm just almost right on time. If you, anybody has any questions, comments?
I've got a question concerning the stormwater stuff, just help me remember the three primary projects that we are doing, and I think I know, but Brendan and I have talked about it, but would you help me recall, I've got people really concerned about storming.
There's eight primary projects.
Brenda, if you would, grab the microphone.
There's eight primary projects. If you look at 16th Street from Laming, where the old rival project, or production facility was at, where it was at, where it floods on 16th and Laming.
Right.
And you go all the way up 16th Street to Sneed where it also floods.
Right.
We'll get all the areas that flood along 16th Street. We'll get West 9th where it floods, West 11th where it floods, Third and Liberty Park where it floods, 12th Street. I'm getting close.
Can I, one that concerns me that...
11th and Center, keep going.
You want mine? So mine is 24th Street out to 28th and Quincy.
28th and Quincy, yes, that's on the list also.
But north of that, all the way up to the front.
But when I name...
I know we don't have the easements.
When I name those addresses, that's the end of the watershed, so everything, yeah, everything north. The project in total, I believe, is $4.7 million, so there's a lot of ground that will be covered. And as far as the one on Quincy, it's not a matter of easements, we have what we need to be able to do the project.
Okay. 16th and Sneed where you have all that problem, that's in that project too. That's going to be, it's going to take a lot of dollars out of the pocket, isn't it?
Well, it always says there's a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
I think that one was one of the larger dollar items.
Yeah.
Right.
Was it like 600,000 or something?
I think, I think it's almost a million dollars, yeah. It's a big project.
Yeah. So the total of all of that, correct me if I'm wrong, is about 4.4 million?
4.7 million, yeah. In total.
Anything else? On the, on Devon line? Question, it's okay. Come back to it.
Well, but that's not all next year, that's over a three-year period. So it's not probably the time when we know, since we kind of published a timeline on those two soliloquies. Have you already got it?
We don't have that timeline until we get the actual grant agreement with the NRC.
Yeah, yeah. So we can communicate that back to our constituents.
I do have a question. I'm getting a lot, when I allocate my names for my reelection deal, a lot of the questions was that and my response was, well, I think that's up to the Missouri, because 65 Highway, we don't do anything. But I get a lot of complaints about underneath the underpass, it's all chunked out down there and the people, you know, of course, they see the city and they feel that the city, you know, it's right in the middle of the city, so they think the city is responsible for that. So is there any way the city can kind of maybe put some heat on, on MoDOT to do something about that?
Yeah, are you, are you talking about the 50 Highway underneath the old...
Right, nearby the old high school.
Yeah, and actually, we do have, we have been working with MoDOT and we came to a kind of a handshake agreement, if you will, that we are going to loan them our equipment and operators to basically underneath their takeout that, I can't remember how far back we're going, but anyway, we're going to resurface that for them in the spring.
Well, that gives me something to tell people.
Yeah, yeah. But, but yeah, MoDOT's, and we make MoDOT aware of where we see issues, of course, they know it as well. You know, they're fighting some of the same problems that we are as far as, you know, staffing and equipment availability and all of that. And that's why we offered to and they've accepted to partner with them. I hope, personally, I hope to expand upon that relationship to get more of that done. If we're, if we help them solve problems, they're more likely to come here to solve their problems.
Correct.
Yes.
That just gives me an answer to tell my people.
There was another one that we talked about, it was on 65, there by Orson Plaza. Do you have an update on that, Brenda?
Everything is dependent on when the actual claims are issued.
Yeah. Okay. Devon, on the, on the recovering the cost of abatements, have you gotten any information from Marcia on did we were able to do that, go around the taxes, or is that still too early?
It's in December.
Yeah.
I haven't received an early address, maybe to be our contact. I would say we'll get it next week.
Next week. I know we have collected some that we would not have...
Oh, I will, yeah.
The total on that was about 100,000, 100 and...
That'd be, that would be against the taxes with like 104,000.
Ready to move? Okay, next item on the agenda is us going through the overview of the presentations that were given over the last several council meetings. And once again, I appreciate you all sending through those presentations. I do think they're very important to go through that. And so as part of my thoughts for the planning process and again, kind of giving, getting a little philosophical on you here, but it's a journey and not a destination. The goal that we've been working on is to strengthen the strategic planning process to make it a better outcome. And my belief is, is that it's easy to get focused on the how, you know, what we're doing, how we're accomplishing things and the services that provided, the whats of what we're doing. And we lose sight of the reasons providing the services in the first place. It's easy for the, as a government to fall into that trap of, well, how much money do we have to spend and how are we going to spend it? And I like to try to, try to force that into the other way around. What do we want to accomplish, but first of all, why? You know, what is it, what problems are we trying to solve? What things are we trying to accomplish or how are we trying to accomplish that? And then where do we get the money for it? So I suggest that if we keep pushing that focus to the whys, keep asking ourselves, why are we even doing this? Then the whats and the hows are still the sub-choices as we get through the budget and then we get through the making choices between what are we going to fund here and what were we not able to fund? But if we look at it from the customer standpoint of what drives value to our customers, then it becomes more of a value-based decision and makes it an easier decision for you all. So. As this relates to the financial planning, as I mentioned, the, you know, the government thinking trap of how much money do we have to spend and where are we going to spend it? And that it's not zero-based budgeting, that's not what I'm talking about, but it does move it along that scale closer to zero-based budgeting. And then also, you know, pulling back from my previous life of working in the private sector on, in manufacturing, you know, bringing the lean concept. And I know some people cringe when I say the word lean because they have a misconception about what I'm really talking about. And there's been a lot of talk over the last several years here about bringing those concepts to government, so I'm not out there by myself just saying crazy things. But the whole concept to me is just thinking in those terms. If it doesn't provide value to our customer, then it's inherently waste. And that's the whole concept. So we need to think in terms of what provides value to our customers. And then, of course, also to go on a long hand in hand with that is the continuous mind, our continuous improvement mindset. And this is one of my pet pieces is I, you know, I try to challenge myself to always think it can always be better. And so how do I strive every day to make tomorrow better? And so that's where I come up with it's a journey and not a destination because it's never perfect. It can always be better. So as we move along that journey, the methods of the madness are the recent methods employed and I won't spend a lot of time on this because we've gone through it before, just trying to remind everybody there's a reason why we go through these strategic plans and you all spend a lot of time and each of your department directors, all of your staff, spend a lot of time putting together these strategic plans and we appreciate you guys sitting and going through those and all of the interaction that we get going through that. And then also, you know, just the databases and then the longer range financial planning that we do, the five-year capital improvements plan that we've got up and going, and then also the balanced three-year line item forecast that helps lay out, you know, what can we accomplish? You know, maybe we can't get it done this year, but keeping our eye on the horizon. Then also, you know, the plans, as we said, you know, keeping the focus on the why and then the, also, and I forgot to mention this when I was talking about your packet, but the more clearly identified funding restrictions to facilitate more informed decisions on which project really competes worth the same dollars. I know for the public, it is very hard and really for staff at times, it's really hard to understand that our dollars are not all, you know, you can't use all of our dollars for anything that you want to do. They come to us in buckets, they are restricted by the voter's approvals of what we can spend those monies on. So just because we get this much money in doesn't mean that we can spend it all on suburbs or we can spend it all on streets or we can spend it all on, so your hands are tied a little bit in how you can spend those funds. And not only that, there's a certain level of responsibility there too, if you take that. Really with our enterprise funds, those have, those need to be self-sustaining through rates. You can't be taking, if you're taking money from the general fund and you're moving it over to support these enterprise funds, that is a short-term bandage that will eventually, you'll end up poor now for about a month. I'd like to come along for it. Sure, sure. Yeah, and my way of saying that is it's a hidden tax. You're, you are taking tax dollars that come from the general public and giving it to benefit a certain individual by offsetting their use of sewer or use of water, those kinds of things. So it becomes a hidden tax. But the opposite is also true that we don't want to make excess money on our utilities to where we're, we're charging more than it really should or is costing us to be, to provide those services. So they need balance. But yeah, excellent point. So in your packet, though, I think it's the last thing there, I just give you a summary of where our funds, our tax dollars come from. And then, so it's just for your reference there on where those monies come from and then where they, what they can be spent on or what they are being spent on and then a general feel for how much they are. So just keep that in mind and then that's also on your scoring or your ranking sheet, you'll see that they are broken up really just for the tax dollars by like the general fund, the transportation fund, the capital improvements fund, and those kinds of things. And that's why those are done that way. So you can't score one on the capital improvements, higher on the general fund or vice versa, that you can't use those funds for. One minute? Yeah. Thanks for putting that because we're... Yeah. Okay, so now what we'll do is we'll go through each of those presentations that you saw and it's really hard for me to do, but I try to break them down and make it one slide each, you know, and so, you know, no offense to everybody, but some, you know, if I left stuff out, hopefully I didn't leave out the most important pieces, but just, this is intended to just be a refresher for you all, for councils to get it refreshed in their mind, you know, generally where we hit in X, Y, Z department. And also, I've put together the related handouts and then, and then also for the scoring. So as you go through, let's talk about any of those kinds of things so that you understand what it is we're asking you to rank. And then also, if you all want to add something to that ranking, you know, don't hesitate, let's go through it at that point in time. Also, this meeting is designed for you all to have open conversation with your staff. So, you know, if you want to have more conversation or get more information on what they proposed in their strategic plan or what you'd like to see them do different, this is the time. This is, this is what that's set up for. So I would recommend that. Without further ado, I just go through them in the order that you're accustomed to seeing them in the financial statements and for the fire department, it's to be number 12 in our general ledger, so Department 12, so they're the first one. So as Chief Irwin went through with you, what they do or their why is they provide quality protection and medical call first responders. Their mission, and Irwin really, really hammered this home and it really fits in with what I was just talking about as far as value to our customer. And it's a mindset that puts the community first. And so from that, he built his strategic plan around improvement for them and his improvements are in our people, our staff, and that's providing excellent training and equipment and those kinds of things to make them effective, effective. Accessibility, he's promoting more public relations, more engagement to be seen and be involved and with the community. Availability and response to grow with the community. Deployment models that meet their needs, that's where, you know, the squad program or, and the three-station model has come from or grown out of that. And then forecasting, looking at solving their problems before they know it's a problem so that they can sleep well. So the major items in his strategic plan for initiatives going forward is the fire station, adding the one new one this year to get us to the three-station model and then after that, we will add the, or replace the central station with a, with another station. So. And then, of course, with a new station, you've got to equip it and so we need a new pumper and then also the third squad unit eventually. So. The, and those are things that you'll see on the, on the ranking sheet. And I guess I should have said too, your ranking sheet, you know, mark it up, write on it all you want, I will actually give you control sheets after we're done, when we're ready to rank. rank. So you can write all over those, make your notes on those, uh, whatever you want. Those are not going to be the ones that you actually turn in. Um, the Freddie, the, oh, I'm sorry, the pre-hire, the 12 to 15 staff or two staff the third station, Freddie the fire truck, um, the medical UTV, uh, uh, vehicle that we, we talked about last year and then, um, he talked in about in his strategic plan. And then also inspector vehicles. So any questions, comments, any discussion you all want to handle?
How far out is the third station? If we need to pre-hire them, how, how soon? How far out? You know, grab your monitor there. It's you.
So Councilman Foster can hear me right?
Yeah.
So currently we're in the design phase for the first station. Okay? When that is completed, we're looking mid-year next year. I think it takes about a year and a half, I think, is what we decided. So once that station goes into service, once we have that station built, we are technically at three stations with the central fire station, Hubbard Park station, and then headquarters. So we would, once that first station is built, we are at three stations. It is what, how we want to staff now those three stations. So the problem that we run into or what we, we are forecasting to see is, is that I currently have 39 line and file staffs. When we add trucks, we add stations, I need drivers and I need firefighters to, to work those trucks. So what our fear is, is that if we don't pre-hire, we don't forecast and get those employees in, we can't get them trained to drive fire trucks, know the city, know our policies and procedures and those kinds of things in a timely fashion that we are an effective force with that third station, if that makes sense. Does that make sense? So my fear is, is that we build the third station and we hold off and then I bring in an influx of new firefighters that can't drive fire trucks, can't, don't know the city, don't know our policies, those kinds of things. And then I can put those firefighters on an engine with senior staff, but then I can't staff the other fire truck, if that, if that makes sense. So that's kind of what we were deciding, we were discussing and, and with the safer grants and those kinds of things. And I know that we're probably going to discuss that. I don't know if this is the right time to discuss that.
This is the top.
So, um, as you guys are aware, that we, we put in for an AFG grant last, last year and we were awarded for air packs. So the assistance firefighters program has three phases to it. They have a fire prevention phase, they have an equipment phase, which we got our air packs off of, and a safer, safer grant phase. So we can apply for all three of those grants. I did not know that, but we can apply for all three of those grants in the same fiscal year. So what a safer grant is and what we're hoping to do is a safer grant, basically when you put in the application, um, there's a whole lot of numbers that go in there and what we pay those employees, what insurance costs, what retirement things come. And basically the federal government would, will award a grant to pay for X number of employees for three years. So, um...
They have to be new employees.
Yeah, they have to be new employees. Um, well, that is correct. Um, they have to be new employees. So, um, if we're going to take our staffing from a minimum of, of, or a shift of 13 to 18 to cover three stations, that's 15 employees that we have to hire to bring onto the department. So do we, do we put in one grant for all 15 employees now and they're, and they're paying for them for the next three years? Because you all are aware, grants are very finicky and it, and if you've, we've sat, we've scored grant and, uh, my deputy chief went and actually sat on the panel in, in Maryland for the safer grant. And it really just depends on who your grant reviewer is, what kind of day they've had to whether or not you get scored high or low. So we run the risk if, if we only do like half of those employees now and we're awarded that grant, next year we may not get awarded that grant. So now we're on the hook for those employees. So what we, we've been discussing is, is that do we go and ask for a grant for all of those employees now, which does, will upstaff the department to a, to a level that we're, we're, really we're over a level that we need to be. We're just, it's just going to take us some time to get there. So we have a three-year window that the federal government is paying for those employees. And by three years, we will be where we need those employees anyway. So that is, that's, that's what we're looking at for staffing and, and why the safer grant is...
I didn't want to interrupt you like that, but three years, what we have, in three years, we have the station at Centennial also.
Yes, we should.
Okay. So, so really it makes a lot of sense.
Depending on, depending on weather delays and those kinds of things.
Yeah, but I mean, at this point in time, we think...
But regardless, if we have the Centennial station or not, we still have the central fire station. So we, in effect, will have three stations. It's just depending on how we want to staff those three stations.
Well, Centennial will be the fourth, right?
Would be the fourth, but once Centennial goes into service, we would, we would abandon the central fire station, move that crew over and we would stop running out of the central fire station.
Okay.
So for a time, you're going to have the central fire station responding to calls as well and the Hubbard Park call. So those two stations are going to be relatively close in their run boxes and, and where they respond to. It'll just be waiting to move them over to the Centennial station. So we'll have the three facilities. One of them just will be the old facility.
Is there a timeframe to have those new hires hired for the safer grant, in case it comes into play?
So the safer grant will pay for those employees over the three-year period, but we have, I think it's a 24-month window to get those employees hired because getting firefighters is hard and they understand that you can't, I just can't go hire 15 people and, and, and put them off. Um, and one of the things that we, I will be coming to you about is, is that if we were to do the safer grant and award a safer grant, it probably wouldn't be, I'm assuming it's going to be like the AFG grant or our air pack grant. We won't know until December of this, of 2023. So we wouldn't even be starting that process until January, February of 2024. So there is kind of a window that we can prepare for it. Um, but with that, the safer grant will pay for their, their, their salaries and their insurance. We will have to equip them. And if you're talking 15 personnel, you're talking 30 sets of bunker gear, you're talking 13, uh, 15 helmets, you're talking a lot of equipment that we're going to have to use. So I understand just doing the safer grant and they're paying for that, but there will be some cost to the cities to, to equip those people. So, um, I'm excited and nervous all at the same time because, because that's a, that's a lot to onboard. But the biggest thing is, is that I need those people on so I can get them trained on streets and knowing addresses and where they're going and get them qualified on driving. Because our, our drivers, it's about a four or five-month process for our firefighters to actually work into being able to drive the apparatus. And we do that because they have to have so many hours of actual drive time on non-emergency responses, they have to get used to driving the vehicles. And we have to have so many hours of actually driving that vehicle on an emergency response where they have somebody that is watching them. Um, and we do that just for our safety, for our citizen's safety and, and the financial liability. We don't want to send it, it's only been here for a couple of weeks. We don't want to put them behind the wheel of a $50,000, a $50,000 pound fire truck and blow a stoplight and do damage. So...
Do you have a line item in your budget for recruitment incentive?
No.
Should, is that something that maybe council should consider?
It is something that we have discussed, that myself and the city administrator have discussed on recruitment and retention, um, programs and, and pay raises and pay, pay scales and all of that. We, it's been in that discussion, yes.
One thing I learned in going through that grant scoring process too was if you need it, you need to ask for it and that's the only way you're going to get it.
Right.
There were some of those applications that we were looking at where they were asking for a lot. And I was like, there's no way that they're going to get what they're asking for. And in the end, they got what they were asking for because they asked for it.
Yep. And, and, and that is of the mindset and I know I'm up in front of you guys a lot asking for things, but I am under the firm of, firm belief that if you don't ask for it, you're not going to get it. You're not going to get any, you're, you're going to get zero things that you don't ask for. So, um, and, and with this and, and of the grant, it's a very finicky process. And when you do a grant evaluation, if you're, if you're looking at hiring 15 people, the evaluators look at that and go, okay, this is what they need. This is what they have to have to get to where they want to be. If we ask for half of that, then that grant evaluator is going to know, well, they're going to be asking for another grant. Why didn't they just do it at this one time? You know, seven people or eight people really isn't going to get them to where they need to be. So they're really not following their model and they're not, they're not preparing themselves for the future. They're just trying to do a stopgap to try to get them to where they need to be. And, and, um, it is of my opinion that we ask for all of them and, and we let the government pay for them for three years and then we, then we have to, in that three-year period, we then have to look at, okay, this is, this is where we're going to be in, in 2027. We are now going to start incurring those costs.
Have you started that fee implementation, have we spoke of a few months back?
For Vicer?
Is that, what was that, what award?
So Vicer's the compliance engine that that isn't, we, we discussed is in effect. Um, we don't receive any fees for that. And we did discuss, I think what you're talking about is if we go back the third or the fourth time to imposing a fee for our inspectors, we have not, we, we are working on that plan to bring to you guys, but that is, that will be something that you will have to decide on and you will have to make that decision because that is a cost to our businesses. And we have to outweigh whether or not a, a $50 fourth time or third time fee for us to go back out and do your inspection offsets those costs of us going out five, six, seven times for that inspector to be out there. So, but, but that will be, that will be coming to you guys. You guys will get to make that decision. What else you got?
On the inspection vehicles?
Yes.
Uh, who, who's going to be using the inspectors?
The two inspectors. So thank you to Chief Work. We, we have two chargers of, of, uh, Chief Works that came off the road and basically were replaced. Those vehicles have a lot of miles on them and no disrespect to the police department, but they are very hard on their vehicles. So fleet maintenance is down. Um, in fact, they were just down working on both of them yesterday because they have issues and batteries are dying and we replaced batteries on them. Um, so the inspector vehicles will be solely used for the two inspectors. And we are tentatively thinking that we can get 15 to 20 years out of those vehicles because they're only driving, um, it's not like they're out on the road driving around like a police vehicle. They're going to businesses. So, um, those inspector vehicles would be used for just for the two inspectors to go out and do inspections.
Okay, but they're not going to drive them home or?
No, sir. No, sir. They would be left at the station. So they could then be used on the weekends for if we send somebody out for training, we could, they could take one of those inspector vehicles on the weekend. Uh, we wouldn't want to use, let them use, the, the regular department use them during the week because they're, then my inspector is stuck in the office because he doesn't have a vehicle. But no, they are not take-home vehicles.
On the medical UTV, can you run me through what that was used for again?
So the medical UTV would be used for, um, we have a lot of Katy Trail that runs through the town, um, through the city. Um, Cloverdale, um, not so much Spring Fork anymore, but anytime that we have to go out and, um, get in the parks or get on the trail or anything that's off-road, we don't really have a way, we don't have a vehicle to get out to them. So if we had to go, we, we had a dog through the ice, um, last year at, out at Cloverdale. Um, we had to stay in the parking lot and basically carry all of our equipment, all our water rescue equipment out to the, to the lake to where that, that animal was. So what we would like to use that for is that we, we have to go off-road, we have to get on the trail. Um, there are a lot of inaccessible spots, trail especially from, um, uh, Clarendon Road to, um, Grand, there's really no access to, to Clover, uh, to the Katy Trail on that, on that stretch. So we would have to drive. I don't have a vehicle that I can take down, down the, the trail that's not going to damage the trail. Um, so we're looking at, usually get it for that. Um, for Scott Doplin and, uh, and everything, the, the Thanksgiving Day events and the Christmas parade and all of those things, basically being able to put a crew in that and having them either driving or stage where they can move because it's a lot easier to move that vehicle than it would be for a fire truck or even one of the squads to get down with a large crowd. So we want to use them for those types of events, those types of events. Um, we're also looking at, um, getting a unit that can go in it that has a, it's a 200-gallon water tank that if we have to get off-road to, um, put out a small fire, um, the, along the railer tracks or something like that, that we can drive it and we can, we can put, put water out and basically bring our own water with us, um, for those types of incidences as well.
Does UTV need a truck and trailer as well?
It would need a trailer. We have the truck. Um, the, so our brush truck and our, our, um, uh, support truck, we have, we have, one's a Ford F-250, one's a Ford F-350. Our one ton is the brush truck. We have those two trucks that have been in service since, um, early 2000. I'd have to, I'd have to go off the, we, we received those two trucks off of a Seaborn grant. Um, they were, uh, shortly after 9/11, um, the federal government was giving, you know, all of this money and equipment and we actually got two pickup trucks through federal funds to, so those two trucks are still in service. Um, we did discuss that that brush truck is getting very old and it takes a beating because it is the truck that goes out for our mutual aid responses into the county. Um, and it's been in a number of cornfields. And so, but we do have two trucks that can pull it. Um, and we would need a trailer, a smaller trailer to put it on to pull behind, but, um, in the grand scheme of things, trailers are pretty cheap.
Well, I think, you know, and, and I think the trailer would tie in with that Freddie truck too.
Yeah.
Because you ain't lifting it. Uh, it, it, it's like equivalent to a golf cart. You can't lift a golf cart.
Um, excuse me, it also ties into being able to move our, um, so we have one riding lawnmower. We mow our both properties, both, both stations. Our, our personnel do that. So the mower is at the headquarters station and right now we, we load it up in that big white, um, enclosed trailer, um, to bring it back forth. A smaller trailer, then we could put that lawnmower on. It's easier to move that mower between two stations as well.
You can get, you can get one of those workers for about $1,400.
Yes, sir. Yes.
This is kind of to you, it's Chief Work. Uh, I wish we, and I know you may do this, Chief, patrol say from Grand out to 32nd or to, I'm sorry, Clarendon Road. There, uh, on the, can we patrol the trail? The Katy Trail?
Yeah.
So maybe we do it with bikes already, but I wish we had a, an ATV somewhere between the two departments that could occasionally go up that trail at night with a bunch of light. We have a lot of issues in the Fort Worth from 65 Highway or some that I know of. Boy, it'd be nice, it just kind of dawned on me. You guys share stuff anyway. If we could occasionally let an ATV go on through there at night checking things out.
What we have found about the sharing of the UTV, and, and I appreciate Chief Work's availability to that, but what we have found is generally we both need it on the same events. So like the Christmas parade, we, we, it went up and down and Thanksgiving Day parade, or not parade, but Thanksgiving Day fireworks. We both could have been moving stuff, but we had the one UTV and, and although we share it, unfortunately it's like we need it on, on the same events. So, um, do we get to use it? They got to use it this year, so we get to use it next year type of thing.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we get another one, I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to fly below my level and tell you how to do your job, but, you know, I could see something like that being utilized off events to help them patrol down Katy Trail and...
And, and our station, our headquarters station is relatively close to the Katy Trail. So in the event that you wanted, they wanted, if the police department wanted to take that UTV down the trail rather than bringing them there all the way across from here, they could just get in ours and drive because, um, one of the things that we, we looked at adding to ours was, uh, was the 32-inch light bar that goes across. It's just a white light so that it, it's a floodlight. So they could, you know, law enforcement could come over and use it anytime they needed to. And if they needed to go out and look for somebody, they could, it wouldn't just solely be for the fire department. We would, we would be using it a majority of the time, but if law enforcement needed, just like their drones, if we need their drones, we call them and, and they go in.
Well, that shared use of things like that helps me justify, that's why I brought that up. And I could just see a big old police truck in the back of that ATV at the right time. So like, you know, you got to haul a dog in once for them.
Yep. Come on, deja.
Yes. What, what is the Freddie Fire Truck?
So I don't have it, so Freddie Fire Truck is a truck that's about maybe about how it was, got big eyeballs on it and lights on it. And basically, um, what it allows our fire inspectors to do is, um, when we go to big crowds, um, my, one of my, um, Jacob Carver is one of my fire inspectors and he is, it is scary how much he likes fire prevention. I mean, he is, I don't know if he was hit on the head. He, he has just ate up with it. He has got aspirations of bringing that truck to schools. Um, and I know that, um, Councilman Hiller had talked about bringing it to the Dare Car Show and those kinds of things. But my, my inspector wants to drive this little fire truck down during the Christmas parade and, and bring it over and talk to kids because, um, although he will be close to it, it's got a little camera on it and they can talk and, and do, interact with the kids. So it's basically a fire prevention tool.
I think it'd be a great education tool.
We used to have Pluggy, I don't know if you remember Pluggy? It used to be a fire plug, um, that had wheels and it would drive around and it, it would pop up and his head would come up and the top of the plug would raise up and... And um, we used that for years. It was made in Germany. Um, but, so once it started having issues, you had to get everything, source everything from Germany and it was just, I mean, you could almost buy a new one for what they wanted in parts. So we haven't used Pluggy for years. Um, in fact, I'm not even sure we still have him. I'm not sure that Chief Duff still didn't retire him out. So, um, but it's just, it is a tool for us to get to schools and daycares and parades and, and, and events that we can send our inspectors out to.
Okay. And I, I will say as a compliment to Jacob, he came out on the Chief Deputy Shaw to my place of employment and trained us in fire prevention and CPR. And his passion is second to none. And if anything, he is worth investing in uh for our city and for his education and his passion for our department.
Outside, outside of doing inspections, and he's been doing a number of inspections. He sits on his computer for a few hours a day going through, looking for grants, um, grant availability, things, tools that we could possibly use. I mean, he spends a lot of time on what he can do for kids and what he can do for adults. And, and, and I don't, I know everybody's a football, well, not everybody, but most people are football fans and follow the NFL. And the events that happened with the Buffalo Bills and, and the Cincinnati Bengals has actually, we have actually gotten phone calls now from members of our community about doing, offering CPR to our community. Um, so in light of that, we, we have started looking at what is it going to take to, to start doing CPR classes and first aid classes within the department? The biggest issue is getting instructors through and getting them where we can do those. So that may be a, a, a program that we may be bringing to you guys later in the year, once we can get all the, the things worked out. Um, because honestly, I'd like to at some point open up the station like one Wednesday a month and just and basically let anybody that wants to come in and get CPR, get CPR trained. Um, it is now a requirement in the schools. Um, it's a graduation requirement through um, the state of Missouri is you have to have your, your CPR for state class. Um, it is a requirement to graduate from, from a Missouri school now. So um, I do it, or I did it for, for Greenridge for a number of years um, for their students, so.
Man, I will, I will say this, uh, so the council kind of knows it. Um, I'm sure they do, but I go to a lot of school events every year. And I'm always pretty proud of Sodalia Fire Department's work there. And, and I know you're there because I see all these little red hats the little kids have wearing around and it's pretty neat. Uh, they get to climb all over a fire truck and, and they, they talk, give them fire safety stuff and then they come over and they sit in my car. So um, you know, I'm, 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 I'm glad to see you guys out there doing that. You know, I'm sure that's a, a kind of a pain sometimes, but you know.
It is, it is, it is not a pain. My guys, I gotta have, the, the credit goes to my people. They, they are excited about doing those things and, you know, they, they may have a, come in in the morning and go, ah. But by the time that they get there, they're just as excited as, I mean, because they, they like kids, they like, they like showing off their equipment. You know, they like being representative of the city. You know, they like going out to these events to do those things and um stickers are a huge thing. I mean-
Yeah.
We, we, in our fire prevention budget, we, we buy a lot of stickers. And kids want stickers and Chief Work can probably attest to this because they give their lot.
Yeah.
You come with a roll of stickers. We do it on house fires. If we go to a fire and there's kids around, we carry them on the truck. They, I have guys that will, will just start walking the, the gallery, if you will, and giving out stickers to kids because they love them.
I'd probably go with two to twenty rolls of their stickers every year for myself.
Yeah.
You know, I know it's, I know it's a big deal and just keep, keep, keep up that good work and-
We, we are going to do our best. We are always trying to move forward, always trying to improve. Um, unfortunately, that means I get to sit in front of you guys and ask for more money sometimes, but, and for equipment, but um, you know, we're doing our best.
I think you do a good job when, when you're needed too, as far as, you know, I've watched you put out a couple of fires.
Thank you.
Can we move to the next one?
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so Police Department, uh, you've heard Chief Works' strategic plan presentation. What they provide is law enforcement investigations, traffic, crime resolutions, the drone, the K nine unit, the school resource officers, um, as well as the special response team. Um, and within that, the, the new initiatives or the initiatives is, uh, uh, that he focused on in his presentation. And, and you know, this is going to be a little bit of a consistent theme, but uh, um, Chief Work hit on it pretty heavily in his presentation as far as competitive compensation and benefits package. And uh, you know, I, I mean, we're fine in this citywide, but it's particularly problematic in the police department. Um, and uh, and so we're going to have to focus a lot of attention on how do, how do we resolve that? You know, if, if it was, it was a problem before the, the competitive labor mar, or the labor market got more competitive because of some of the, my opinion, for what it's worth, some of the national events and those kinds of things and the national attitudes. There are fewer and fewer people that have the courage to go into police services. And so uh, so we were already going into a, are already experiencing a trend of there are fewer and fewer people to compete for when we're trying to recruit. And so if we want to, you know, get the better of those recruits, then we have to have a stronger uh, package. And so there's simply not enough police officers joining the, the academy to go around. And so we're all competing for the same folks and uh, and it's, and it's getting tougher and tougher to do. So with that, uh, you won't see that as a line item on the, um, on the ranking sheet, but uh, but just keep in mind that, that will be a huge piece for our, our basic proposal, so. Uh, recruitment and retention incentives, you will see on there the career growth programs, um, you know, and, and Chief Works talks about those. Uh, you know, that, that is something that sets us apart other than compensation. It's, you know, we, we give officers, you know, particularly the ones that, that really want to come and grow with us and, and really get involved and make a difference. Uh, we give them a better opportunity than they can get elsewhere. The body worn cameras, uh, you'll see that on your, uh, I think it's on the, the scoring sheet. Uh, the special response team, train and equip. Um, you know, this is, uh, this is one of the newer initiatives that Chief Work has been implementing for the last year or so. Uh, trying to, trying to pull that team together. Um, and you know, let's face it, I, you know, I, I can't say it any other way, but uh, you know, some of the folks we are forced to deal with are a little violent and we got to be better trained and better equipped than they are. So um, we uh, to do that safely and to protect the public from folks that, that want to do harm. Uh, the community services, uh, that involves the special events, the community involvement, the dare, the social media, the online police records and online reporting. Uh, and again, he's, he's talked a lot about and, and this has been, you know, part of his strategy, you know, police, or the problem oriented policing to really work on the environment and then also engaging the community to gain their trust and gain their, enlist their assistance and um, and, and helping to prevent crime in the first place, but then after the crime exists and helping us stamp it out. The Citizens Academy has been a big part of that to develop that relationship. And of course Dare has, over the last uh, several decades, has been a, a big part of that. And then uh, they added the Dare Camp this year, which is uh, you know, just enhances that whole program. And then, as I mentioned, the, the special operations, the CRU unit and the POP strategy. Any questions, comments, um, any discussion with Chief Work?
How many school resource officers do we provide?
Right now, we're just at one.
And if the county provides one as well?
So there are, there are a total of three school resource officers in Sodalia. We have one at Smith Cotton Junior High. Um, and Pettis County has one at the high school and the college.
Do we need to increase that at all or?
That, that'll be up to those specific schools if they would like to, to change. Um, the sheriff has spoke about increasing school resource officers in the county, at the county schools, and that may provide an opportunity for us to fill that void. Um, our, our struggle at this point is going to be having the officers to fill those positions.
And that is the, the, the school district actually helps fund that.
Yeah. If you guys remember that agreement we did back in September, I think it was, uh, for the junior high. Um, if, if we do that and cha, and have other schools, we'll have an agreement for each one of those schools.
Yeah, they, they fund about eighty percent of the cost of the office.
Yes.
On your recruitment incentives, uh, that's money spent to advertise jobs in the police department?
Well, we, we have a line item for some of our recruitment strategies, um, but that is actually a hiring incentive. So what we offer is either a, a person can come to us, go through our, our hiring process and be hired and we pay for them to go to the police academy. Um, if in twenty twenty, the council approved and allowed me to enter into contracts with those employees. So I can contract with an employee and either pay for their academy, um, pay for them to go through that. We provide everything for them. We give them a car to drive back and forth. Um, we pay for the academy, we pay them a wage. Um, and that's one way of contracting it. The other that we also use the, for the hiring incentive is, is that say someone's post certified, um, either they're, they're finishing the academy on their own or even better, they've got some prior experience. Um, we hire that person and we give them the hiring incentive. So they get um, half of the money upfront when they start with us and they get the other half after they've completed training. That is also a contract. Um, you guys approved that in twenty twenty as well with the other one. And so that, um, that is a three year contract as well. Both of them are three year contracts.
What's, uh, what's the average cost to send a person to the?
So if we pay for the police academy, the contract is usually in the thirty thousand dollar category range or better or higher. Um, because the academy, it, that cost, uh, the wages cost, uh, the ammunition, equipment, all those types of things are, are put together uh, with that contract that we have. It lays out each one of those costs and what categories we will um, ask for reimbursement if someone does not fulfill that contract.
All right, so then thirty thousand dollars, we just pay for one, one person, is what it is?
That's, that's correct. And if you guys refer back to my presentation, that's what I said, every time someone leaves the department, we are spending a lot of money. A lot of money walks out the door. So that's why it's important to have a competitive compensation uh, package. Because we want our folks to stay here. Uh, we want them to work for us because we do invest a lot of money and also time and training into our employees to make them good police officers.
But not, not all of those costs that the chief's mentioned come out of that line item.
Yes, I'm sorry. That is correct. Right.
So that thirty thousand is funding more than one person?
Yeah.
You know, that's really just-
That's just the hiring incentive. I'm sorry, there's confusion on that. Yeah, that is just the hiring incentive portion. The, those other costs, like for example, the salary is going to come out of our salary budget. Um, the training's going to come out of our training budget. Um, the ammunition's going to come out of the ammo budget. It's just that contract encompasses all those costs.
Right, sir. And Matt, if we hire them and we pay for their schooling though, uh, is there a timeline on the contract, the employment contract? And do they have to be employed for a certain amount of time?
Right, three years. Three, and it's three years from the time that they are done with training.
And if they break that contract?
Then uh, it is prorated uh, by monthly costs and basically that cost is divided into thirty six. So if it takes them five months to go through the academy and about four months to go through our field training program, once they're complete with that, then that's when, in a sense, that contract at time starts and they have to remain with us another thirty six months. If not, that total dollar amount, and they know the total, total dollar amount when they graduate and they know what the contract amount is and they know how much that monthly cost is.
Also, didn't you say, didn't you, the, the average salary in the communities around us is like five thousand dollars more per officer?
According to some websites that we found that, that in a sense polled the, the starting salary in Missouri, it's about forty seven, forty seven, forty seven, five, somewhere around in there. And we're at forty two, six is our starting average or our base.
And do you feel that that's maybe why some of our officers leave?
Yeah, they're, the, the ones that are leaving to go to other law enforcement agencies, the pay is better.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Pay is, is very competitive. Um, one of the things that we're, that we were talking about and, and Mr. Shaw had talked about at the academies is, is that when there's of course so many, so few police officers out there, um, the people that do well in the police academy that aren't hired, they're going to be like, like a, a professional athlete that's the best. They get to pick where they want to go and who has the best package. So the least, the, the worst package that you have, it usually affects the quality. As you guys know, we don't just hire anybody. Um, our hiring standards have not been lowered through um, all of the struggles and, and trials that we've had law enforcement over the last several years. We're still trying to hold our standards, um, not only through our hiring standards, but our training standards. Um, some departments have dropped those. We haven't and we don't want to. We want to, to have officers that are, are better qualified than other agencies. That's why other agencies are trying to recruit and, and steal our folks is because they are good policemen and they know what they're doing and they have uh, better qualities than a lot of other agencies. So why not try to steal them from us, right? So we want to put together a package that retains them through, through salaries, draws them in through salaries, but also draws them in through the, the, the hiring incentive. Um, and I think that can really help.
And because of that philosophy, that's why we work, or, or why we stay down or we're constantly down. We're, we're not just hiring bodies. We think it's more dangerous to put um, uh, less qualified officers on the street than it is to work for.
And we do, we do an extensive background check that other departments don't do. Um, and it has eliminated people that you would think on the surface looked good, but after a quality background, you find things that, that aren't acceptable. Um, and that's important to me. That's important to the organization. Uh, the great thing is, is that the culture of the department is, is they would rather have those good people they know that they can trust each other with than have someone that is, that is questionable. Other organizations don't do that, but we take pride in, in being an organization of having honest people.
Do we have anything to say there? I serve on police personnel board and, and we really do a lot more than a lot of others.
I can tell you that from experience.
You know, and, and they're taking our people partly because they know they've had that deep background check and, uh, and all the things that Chief said. Really is true. I hate to see that.
I know young man that, that you did not hire, it was before you was the chief, they did not hire and then he went on to become a highway patrolman. So uh, you know, I know your standards are high and that's great. Uh, just should keep it that way.
Do we do anything to stay fair in the criminal justice degree?
So um, we have, we have partnered with them, like with the part-time academy, police academy. Um, it actually is, is um, uh, the certification comes through the police academy, UCM, but it's taught part-time at state fair. I have several officers that work part-time instructing that. Their numbers have been down because their, their minimum um, amount of people, they haven't been able to meet it. Uh, so that's been a little bit of a struggle because we were hiring people out of that. Um, the part-time academy, academy provided folks that are working an opportunity to attend the academy in nights and weekends. Um, so that they could get it and still work a job. Um, so we do things like that. Um, we uh, attend a lot of the different classes at state fair through the instructors. Uh, the dean of the criminal justice department is a retired Sodalia police officer. So we are a guest speaker at a lot of those classes, um, and, and involved in it in that aspect. So that's proven to be valuable. Anytime we have hirings, testings, all those types of things, um, that information goes out to state fair. It actually goes to about a dozen different colleges. So we have, we have started also attending more career fairs. Um, we were going to start doing that. Of course, when COVID hit, a lot of that got eliminated. Um, this year in the, well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say this year, in twenty-two, we attended Lincoln University State Fair. Um, and then we went to uh, an event at UCM as well. So we're trying to reach out to also the colleges, uh, to be involved in those. And then we have some partnerships with Whitman Air Force Base, Whitman Air Force Base. And then also um, Shannon's been involved in several of the, the career development- And then also, um, Shannon's been involved in several of the, the career development programs through the, the military, and we hope that we are going to, actually, I have a conversation yesterday about that, of, about bringing some folks in that are getting out of the military and, and would have an opportunity to do internships with us. So we're looking at any and every way that we can to try to bring people in. Um, the common theme, a lot of times, has been the, the rate. Our rates are lower than what they've been offered at other places.
On the body worn cameras, how many are you?
So we, we have, we're supposed to have forty-six officers. Right now, we're running with forty. That, that amount is to replace all forty-six. Um, we got a grant that replaced some. Um, Panasonic would like us to bring all of ours up to the most current, um, uh, model, because, of course, if you split model years, you run into issues. They've stopped supporting the model that we use, and what I mean by that is they don't make it anymore. So they're not going to make replacement parts. So when all the replacement parts that are in stock are out, your camera is done. They can't replace it. So, um, we've had those for five years. We've had, we started with body cameras. Um, I believe it was in two thousand sixteen, we started using body cameras. Um, so this is our third, if I remember right, our third generation. Uh, second generation of using Panasonic's. They've done very well for us. We've worn those things for five years. That's pretty impressive if you think about wearing something every day. Um, probably not very many people can even raise their hand and say that they kept a cellphone for five years, and this thing's more complicated than a cellphone. So, and they, and they've, they've, uh, but that's, that's, that's few and far between. So these are being worn by a police officer, you know, during fights, during the rain, storms, the snow. That thing is on them. Um, I'm, I think it's really important to keep, um, the rotation on those, um, especially when they go out of, when we go out of a, a situation where they're not supported anymore, because right now, the cost has continued to e- escalate every time we repair one. So the cost to repair one is about two-thirds of buying a new one. So we've reached that point where it's, it's not worth continually repairing them for eight hundred dollars when we can buy a new one for fourteen. Um, something that we have learned is we're going to try to buy a better warranty on them, um, because we are going to break them. You know, there's going to be times when they're going to get broken, so we've got to, uh, got to keep that, that warranty up. Uh, one the other day got kicked and broken by a, by a suspect. So, um, I was trying to kick the officer, missed the officer, but got the body camera. So, um, you know, they're, but the things like that are going to, going to happen. Um, but the, the better quality they are, the more reliable they are. And they've proven to be very reliable. You know, we've had some very serious events over the last, especially the time I've been chief, and the body cameras have worked, and we've been able to hand that video off to agencies that are doing the, the investigations. Um, and one of the comments that I was given, I love investigating stuff with places that their cameras work, because it makes it very easy. There's no questions of what happened.
With that next generation, is there going to be any upgrade in like resolution or anything like that?
Um, the current ones that we have are NHD. It is supposed to be a little bit better, and there's some, uh, better capabilities with batteries. They're supposed to last long. And the, the current one that we have, you can only change the battery. If the battery goes bad, you have to send it back to the company. They have to take it apart and put a new battery in it. This is supposed to be interchangeable. So there's been some, there's, you know, like anything, it's, because the, like I said, the technology in the one we have now, we didn't get it when it first came out, so the technology in the ones that we have now is probably about seven years old. So we would go, this, this model's been out about a year and a half, so.
So it should be a huge bump as far as, I mean, technology's advanced several years, but these?
Right. Right. The, the worst thing is, is like anytime that something's changed, we have to get new docking stations. We have to get new holders, all those little peripherals with it. But, um, those are actually not that expensive compared to the overall cost. But, uh, we found that when we got docking stations, um, it made the downloads faster, made the cameras more reliable, because they're always charged, that sort of thing, so.
Matt, I've got a question. Uh, I mean, it's, like, like you said, you had a suspect kick one and break it. Is there any way we can hold him accountable in repairing that camera?
The, the courts do sometimes get restitution, but it's, uh, a lot of times the folks that do that don't have the means to pay us back to begin with. So they're, they're criminally charged with the action. Whether we see the, the money returned is another story.
Anything else? Well, we, uh, we are actually, uh, at the time that we had scheduled for a break. This discussion has been very good. Uh, do you want to take a quick break? Uh, and, uh, and then the, the next, next department is community development. Um, and, you know, I mean, we, we can and will be very flexible on this schedule. I think this conversation is, is good, and it's, um, and it's, we have time set aside in the, later in the agenda. So I think we're, we're still okay on the schedule, even though it looks like on the agenda we're not. So, so let's, let's take a, take a quick break and, and come back about ten fifteen, and we'll try to make up some.
Over here. I want to do those three.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. I've got to work on those three.
Three times.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started here. The next, uh, next presentation that you all, that we'll go through here, that, uh, that, uh, was, uh, community development. And, uh, community development, what they're about is, is they set the environment to make the city attractive for, uh, for growth. We, uh, we try to set the environment to make it developer-friendly so that, uh, businesses can, can create jobs and, uh, for the, for our citizens, and, uh, and then try to get out of their way and let them be successful. So retail recruitment, we want to put the right business in the right place. Uh, the downtown development, uh, the housing planning and development, the whole planning process, and, and trying to make the, uh, community develop in the right way. Historic preservation is a big piece of, of what they, what they work on. Uh, we also talk about, you know, the, the, once we get it planned and developed, then we want to make sure that, that we, uh, encourage and enforce our compliance with our codes to make it, uh, people living, uh, uh, coexist better. And so we take a proactive code compliance or enforcement action. And, uh, this is one of the, one of the times that, uh, we come together and basically ask council, is that the way, the way you continue, want us to continue? You know, I, I know that, um, since my time, it's always been that, uh, council wants us to be proactive on code enforcement, but it's my understanding that, uh, there were councils in the past that wanted us to only be complaint-driven, and we would not take any code enforcement action, uh, without a, any complaint from a citizen. So, uh, we try to take at least this time every year to make sure that, uh, that that's the action that you all want us to continue. I know, uh, in, in my time, or my tenure here, council has always been very emphatic about, yes, we want, uh, uh, proactive code enforcement, so.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You're in prison for a city. It keeps us safer and?
Yes, okay.
We just need to make sure that we're doing it fair across the board, because some people feel like they're being picked on more so than others. So that, that would be the only thing I would say.
A lot of the time, when, when examining those papers, a lot of times, they, they only see what's going on with them, and they don't see what's going on with everybody else. And you start looking around at the rest, and you look like you're being, you're being treated differently. Yeah. Uh, we have talked with, uh, code enforcement about ensure that we're working with the citizens and treating everyone equally, and it's, you know, the objective is voluntary compliance. Uh, we discussed that. Yeah, I talk about it in terms of carrot and a stick.
Mm-hmm.
We prefer the carrot, but we have to swing the stick when, when, when the carrot doesn't work.
Okay. Um, major initiatives, uh, that they talked about, you know, the comprehensive plan implementation. We want to continue to maintain our focus. You know, that gives us a great document to, uh, to keep that focus and, um, and measure everything again. So, uh, we want to continue to use that and highlight it. The wayfinding, um, uh, basically, we want to reactivate that and update the design, uh, with the, with the new branding. And then also, uh, we got some good stuff out of our Green Street folks about, uh, uh, some good ideas that we'd like to implement there.
As far as that wayfinding and branding, uh, I sat in with the, with the Whitman, uh, I can't remember the name of it, but it was the equity diversity inclusion, uh, that had a meeting about that. One of the things that was highlighted is whenever these airmen are coming to, you know, Sedalia, or they're arriving on base in Nodden Oster from New York, or, uh, you know, Pennsylvania, all these other places, they're coming here. And so they are coming into our community on fifty and sixty-five, and, and what their perception of our community is. Uh, and so I think we need to be aware of that too, to make sure that they, whenever you're coming in on fifty and sixty-five, you are feeling like you are being welcomed into our community. I don't know that it's there for that. So that's, uh, that's where that wayfinding and branding fits in. And it's, you, those are the people you want retiring into your community. Uh, and so you want to make sure that those people are feeling welcomed and included, and like they can come here and they can be themselves.
Yeah, and, and I just said, coming in on that fifty and sixty-five, are, are we directing them even to our downtown area so that they can explore that as well, or is that just where they get, right there? Let me go back home.
Yeah, and I never thought of that. I mean, I'm coming back from that meeting, driving back here on fifty, I was like, thinking about that. A little less experienced, just like if we were just showing up here. And it was a totally different experience than the, the normal drive-in to Sedalia that I, that I have, so. Something to be aware of.
Okay. Um, we want to, you know, again, coming from the comprehensive plan, as well as, uh, as, as the strategic plan presented was expanded upon the Katy Trail, we've got a lot of projects to do that. Uh, the streetscape and the alley reactivation, uh, projects that we've been talking about. Retail and housing recruitment, we need to enhance those efforts and, um, and, and grow. We've got, uh, several indicators now, including the housing study, including the, the comprehensive plan, the work that, the background work that they did on that, that we have a real housing shortage. And not only any total housing shortage, but we have a quality of housing shortage, as well as specific areas where they've identified that we have a shortage. Um, and, uh, we'll talk some more about it later, but, uh, one of the things is, is we, you know, part of the plan with the three fifty-three development is we've identified that we have a high ratio of, uh, renters versus homeownerships as compared to national, state, and, uh, surrounding areas, um, averages. But, uh, uh, that, we also identified in that, that we have a shortage of multiplex-type, uh, areas. And if you look at it in, in terms of development, our, uh, infrastructure gets spread better and more cost-efficiently the greater the density of, uh, of citizens. But then at the same time, we have a lot of older houses that have deferred maintenance that are being used as rentals, and that are single-family dwellings. So what we want to try to do is, is turn the single-family dwellings more into homeowners, while at the same time, increase in opportunities for multiplexes for those that want to be renters. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the three fifty-three urban redevelopment program, the added code enforcement vehicle is, is one of the things that, uh, that you'll see on the sheet. Um, the, uh, basically, we've added a code enforcement officer, so we need another vehicle, um, to, uh, make them effective. And also, you'll see some, uh, dollars in there, and I just took a wild guess at, at the cost there, just for ballpark numbers, but, uh, there will be some costs associated with adopting the updated twenty-twenty-one building codes. And, uh, so I put that on there as well.
I did have some questions regarding that. I mean, are there, uh, like environmental stuff in that twenty-twenty-one code? Does anybody know? Sure, yeah. Twenty-twenty-one becomes more energy-conscious than any other code. And, and, but, but only about the code. We don't have to take every portion of the code. And so, you know, I, I think I've got pretty good confidence in Devin realizing that there's some things that make some high-level amounts of energy efficiency, or, or requiring a green building type of atti- attitude towards any new development. But that's going to take us too far, but I, I, I'm pretty confident that the city will. Is that, that's an answer to you. To me, you looked at me, and I kind of have been involved in that, but.
Is that your judgment too, Devin?
Yeah, so in the last, uh, adoption in twenty fifteen, we did not adopt the energy conservation code. Um, we did not adopt, um, the urban, uh, redevelopment forestry code. There's lots of codes that don't apply, um, to our situation. And then there's other portions inside the codes, like, um, it's in the code that all residential structures have to have fire sprinkler systems. We removed that, um, because we don't want to make that a requirement. It's a high cost to a homeowner.
All residential structures without fire sprinklers?
In, in the current code, in the twenty fifteen code and the twenty-twenty-one code.
Even single-family?
Mm-hmm.
That's, wow, that's something else.
Would have, but you didn't adopt it.
Correct. We, we, we amended it.
I guess that's a really good example.
Yeah. So that's the kind of stuff. You can leave those things out that just don't make sense for our community.
Yeah, that's like, yeah, that, all, I can't, that would not make sense for us.
No, not at all.
Well, how, how do we normally do that though, Devin? It's just, you, community development, just look at it, make some decision? I mean, do you get any input from anybody else outside the department, or?
I've never done it before, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, you, you make recommendations to council on what part of the league that, what group that process. And, and part of what I threw in there as far as funding and for you all to rank is that I anticipate we would have some public meetings, some town hall meetings. We would try to get developers input, landlords input, those kinds of things. And, uh, and, you know, garner public engagement to, to see what really makes sense for us.
Yeah. That would be a good job for the, uh, community development council, maybe going through that. I don't, now that we use that level. It, it takes pretty good scrutiny, because, you know, going back to residential fire protection, it's not as elaborate as commercial fire protection, and it's more costly. But the, the flip side of that is your insurance premiums are less, so. Well, we certainly wouldn't exclude anyone if they wanted to add it, I mean.
No, we make the developer offer it, and obviously, no one takes up on it. But at least they're made aware that they're, that is encouraged, if they would like to.
I could take everybody have a residential fire sprinkler, and we could just cut back on the fire department. I was kidding.
You go about.
I just need to be.
Wow. We look at it. Wow. We would have a hard time making it through the show.
You'd have people coming and visiting you. That's, that's.
All of us. We're all in this together.
Well, anything else? Yeah, and finally, there was the electronic plan review, and that was, that was, I think, brought up during. Yeah, and finally there was the electronic plan review and that was, that was, I think, brought up during the, the presentation. And, uh, so we took that and run with it and put that on there as well. And again, that was a, um, uh, kind of a ballpark number that we, we talked about, but, but pulled together, you know, we'll need some equipment to, uh, to do that, um, as well as software and those kinds of things. But I think relatively inexpensive compared to all of the, a lot of other things that we do. But I think it gets us more developer friendly.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, it gets us, uh, closer to the century anyway as far as technology.
Uh, the RFQ for retail recruitment. I know last year we did put out the RFP for RFQ, uh, beforehand. The only bid, was it, the only bid that we received was for the company that gave us the presentation.
No, we didn't, we didn't even get a response back from them.
Oh, we didn't even get a response back from them?
No.
Okay.
Cause there, our conversation with them earlier in the year triggered the need to create the RFP.
Yeah.
They never even answered the RFP that they triggered.
Well, and we were pretty blunt with them that they didn't do a very good job of presenting to council.
Right.
And, uh, so we encouraged them to, um, uh, to, uh, make a better showing in, in, in their RFQ. And I think with that, they had a choice to make. They, uh, as I understood, they, they quoted for Warrensburg.
Yes.
And that would be a little bit of a hard time for them to represent Warrensburg and, uh, fairly. And so I think they saw the writing on the wall and backed off and, and quoted Warrensburg.
And it was strange too, because I directly solicited, I believe it was about eighteen firms where I sent this RFP directly to the people that would respond to it.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we did not receive response and, and, uh, I don't know if that was the economy at the time or, or what was happening there, but, uh.
Will we approach it the same way this year, if you were to pass that?
I, I would re, I would look back at the RFP and adjust it. Uh, it might've been too stringent or too, too tight, so give them more creativity in their response, um, might help.
Yeah. Warrensburg ended up hiring them too.
Do we know, and I was going to ask if we know some status about Warrensburg's relationship with that company?
No, no.
Any improvement? Do we have a status on three fifty-three and, uh, how those meetings are going?
Yeah, so where we're at with that is, is, uh, we've met with college, we've met with, uh, some of the other entities. And where we're at is we've got Rawlins, they're developing the construction plan sets for houses to go in over on the, uh, New York and New York City.
Yeah.
Uh, once we have those construction sets back, we'll pull back together with State Fair Community College and look at, uh, they're going to have, essentially what they're having is their building trades and their construction management programs working on that. So the, the building trades programs will be working on building homes. And then your, their construction management program will be managing the projects. So if there are any holes where, uh, the building trades can't do the work, like take for instance, the finished work of sheetrock, that would be something that the construction management team with, or the, the program in there will be looking at hiring and out and contracting out. So they'll, they'll be running that project.
Have we reached out to any developers? Any, you know?
Not directly. We've talked with some and, and have talked about the opportunity there that, uh, when this opportunity to work more closely with State Fair Community Council, I think it'll be a great program for them, uh, for their, their programs. I mean, it gets them some real, uh, real life experience if they're, if they're learning how to do construction management for us, their building trades department. It will be good for us because we'll be able to get that done cheaper than we would otherwise. Um, and, um, and, and so I, I, I think it's a great partnership, in my opinion.
Yeah, any, anytime you're using public funds, you want to look at public good that's being done with it, right? So you've got, so you're doing public good several different ways there. There is, like you said, they're getting experience, people are getting homes, uh.
They've built several homes already, here's what it is.
Yep, sure.
Do you have a timeline on the one that one can be built with?
They, uh, they are, they are trying to hire a construction, uh, their building trades professor, um, so if you know of anybody. Um, I think their applications are open right now, aren't they?
Yeah, they said they were, we talked to Dr. Bates about that just the other day, he said they were getting close on that.
Yeah.
Their, their target would be the fall.
Yeah.
Start a project.
And then the, on the abatement side of it, we did receive one, uh, one application for a tax abatement. But the, uh, board felt that there needed to be some more.
More information.
Yeah, more information and we needed some clearly defined parameters as we're doing those abatements.
We have received that from that homeowner, um, so we need to reconvene the board to look at her application amendment and, and it's, it's a much better crafted application now.
Okay, good. And we pull back together, and that will be something that council will, will review, uh, so if the board has that on the record.
Are we using the funds that we've allocated in the past for other purposes other than just that block that we've isolated?
Of building those houses?
Of building those houses.
Not yet.
Not yet.
And so right now, everything we've allocated has just kind of been saved.
It's just.
Is that, is that also the purpose for the two hundred thousand now? It's just trying to get it aside?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, part of it was, uh, with the house, I know all of the state people, uh, are starting to take pride in their houses. Uh, uh, remodeling of homes and, and on the twenty-fourth street out by the park, there's a big, uh, apartment complex going out there. And you and I saw that place, well, on twenty, twenty-fourth street or so.
Oh, yeah, that was over at, uh, what was that, twenty-fourth and, uh?
Washington, in that area.
Washington, that area, yeah, yeah.
And then David, they'll put up another apartment here on third street, so even with our hous- housing shortage, you know, we are making some progress.
Yeah, and you have Jeff, Jeff Redford building, uh, out on Winchester and twelve, that area by the water tower, multiplexes, so.
And then, uh, Mr. Kruger is going to put some apartments in on third street, isn't he? Was that his plans?
No, no.
It wasn't?
No, he'll, that was.
All that land he first just getting there?
That would all be commercial use.
Yeah. And we also have, uh, the, the funds that you allocated, uh, out of the ARCA funds to expand the southwest area. We had in that area too, so, yeah, that is in design still, so. Okay. The cemetery, Roger came in and provided his strategic plan. Basically what they provide is, is the burial services, obviously the casket cremation in-ground and columbarium both for the cremation. Uh, they do a lot, uh, on setting military markers and, um, and resetting notes as they, um, they sink or, or get displaced. They oversee the monument setting, the, uh, grounds maintenance. They do about seventy acres of towing and maintenance. The major initiatives that, uh, that he talked about in his strategic plan was the trend towards cremation. Uh, and so then the more columbarium and burials for the cremation. So, um, that sixty-four inch columbarium that was approved in this year's budget is on order. As we talked about, it probably won't show up until next fiscal year. Um, but it's, we're timing that out just about right, um, to where, I don't know, we have about thirty or so columbariums left right now, so let, no, I'm sorry.
No, we're down to eleven.
Down to eleven, okay. So, um, so that's working out to where it's timed out just about right. Uh, and then to talk about, uh, Roger talked about creating a cremation area, basically smaller sites and, um, uh, and then to landscape those differently to, to, um, handle the cremation. The, uh, plotting new areas and new roads and then playing, finish clearing that added ten acre site that we, uh, we purchased last year.
Well, where are we at as far as creating that, um, cremation area?
There's been two different ways we can go with this. Part of the area right behind the office now is an area that's not ideal for casket burials because it is a lower area that we need to plan a little bit of, uh, drainage issues that that could be turned into this cremation area that I've kind of got in my mind. The other is the ten acre site that we are trying to clear of the br- underbrush and the timber that's there now. The, you know, there's a lot of dead trees and things in there that our public works department's been working on, uh, last winter with us. Um, getting that cleared up, going to that direction too. Uh, so both of those areas are kind of what we're looking at. Um, basically, we'd like to kind of see where this ten acre site goes because it would actually make a, a pretty setting on it.
Preferably, which one would you want, which one would be best to go forward to first? Uh, the, the plot of land right behind the office or the ten acre?
I'd almost say, I'd almost say ten acre site.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because the cremation is, is so high now.
Yep.
And so.
I mean, the, I know through the funeral homes, they're seeing a lot more cremations. The thing's right now, it's, a lot of people are doing cremations and then not burying urns at this time. Our numbers actually went down nine, uh, less cremations this year than where we were at last year.
Well, I kind of think that's because we're charging the same amount of money for a cremation burial site as we were for a regular site.
Exactly.
So that just didn't make any sense whatsoever, just putting that kind of money for a little box.
Yep, yep, that's, that's part of what's why that I think that we can downsize the grave lot area. Saves us room, you know, for future, you know, use and reduce that cost to the family to purchase a grave site and still do a monument and, and still bury the urn.
Anything else? Hi, Chris. Okay, animal control fund, Randy came in and, and presented her strategic plan. And basically what the animal control department is about is it's helping animals and citizens coexist. Uh, we, through that, we encourage responsible pet ownership and then also protect citizens from others' pets as well as reducing unwanted pets. Um, the, they also operate the animal shelter that was, uh, you know, as you all know, a generous donation by, uh, the Hecker Foundation. Sue's, Sue's donation there. And, uh, through that, they are increasing live releases, uh, reducing euthanasia. And we are at the point that we euthanize only for humane reasons. Um, and, uh, major initiatives there is this, uh, uh, Randy talked a lot about in her strategic plan about the revising the code of ordinances. We've already done some of that, uh, but she wants to take on, uh, more of that. In looking at, uh, the last code revision that we went through, she's identified that there is, uh, some repetitive sections in our current code and then also some ineffective sections in our codes. So, uh, what she'd like to do is eliminate the, those and replace them with more effective ordinances. So we will be bringing those to you throughout the year. Um, but that's, that's kind of the initiative there is a sort of the, uh, the reason behind all of that. Uh, the electronic citations is being implemented and we're looking forward to, um, uh, how that will help us in our, in our goals here to, um, uh, encourage the responsible ownership piece and, uh, unwanted pets. So walking trail landscaping, um, partnering with the, with our parks and rec department, uh, to help, uh, spread assets there to, uh, to make that a better park, more park-like setting and then, uh, pet-friendly park-like setting, if you will. And then update the older van to keep it in its use as the second vehicle. We've got the new truck and it's, uh, it's being utilized now, but then, uh, we still need a second vehicle uh, for transporting animals to and from the Spade Neuter Clinic, for example, or, um, and then, uh, also when we have, do have at times two animal control officers on the road at the same time. Any questions, comments, discussion with Rand?
Have we approached the county again about working our relationship with them or do we have plans to with the new presiding commissioner?
We have not approached them again. Um, there's some unresolved issues, um, from the past regarding, uh, what happened with the last partnership that we did with them. Um, and furthermore, even if we did approach that again, I, I do not believe that we have the room or the staffing to house county animals. Um, Pettis County is not, I mean, we have multiple towns within our county and, and every one of them has a stray issue. And there are many times throughout the year that we are full, as is with just the, the city's, um, animal issues with the strays that we acquire just within the city limits.
Have we had to work with the county at all since that last incident?
No, we didn't have to work with the county to begin with, we chose to, I chose to. Um, but no, we have not partnered with them or worked with them since then.
It was brought up at the last, uh, animal advisory boards, um, and, uh, I think there is some interest in the, the, uh, the members there in, in opening those discussions again. But, uh, uh, but yeah, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about it and all of those issues were brought up as part of, you know, if we, uh, if we did nothing more than just had a relationship of, you know, we agreed to take in animals from the house there, then we would have to look at expanding the shelter.
Yes.
We don't have the resources, the assets in relation to that we'd be able to do that. We did also though, talk about, uh, some of the, I've been approached by, um, a couple of folks that want, you know, we have some of these subdivisions around the, the, just outside of the city. And, uh, my answer to them is, is, you know, you're always welcome to animals. And then you get not only the animal control services, but then you get all of the other services. And really when you look at it, it, you know, the first answer I get back is, is well, but I don't want my taxes to go up. They go up, I think it's about three cents per hundred. So it, it's not really, uh, and that is more than offset with the, with the lesser cost of the, uh, utility as well as the lesser insurance rates.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, that's always been my answer to them is, is, you know, if you want animal control services, you know, that's, that's part of the city function and come into the city and even have that function.
Yeah, it does, it, to me, it, we're actually, doesn't it make sense to make city residents pay for alley residents, animal control services at all?
Yeah, uh, uh, is there any counties that have their own animal control? Well, it'd be worth something looking at too, wouldn't you say?
That would be, uh, the county government to do, who's the city government? My opinion. Anything else? Hi, Chris. Transportation fund, uh, the first one that we look at in, in the transportation fund is the airport. And Derek came in and provided his strategic, strategic plan. Uh, what, what the airport does is it provides local commerce, air transportation options. Uh, it is essential for the economic base and further growth. And, uh, he presented that, uh, I can't remember, I think it was the, the Department of Transportation that, uh, did a study and estimated that we make about a three point six million dollar impact through the airport. They run about eleven thousand operations, uh, operations being to take off or landing, uh, per year. Major initiatives that, uh, uh, over the past, uh, recent past. Major initiatives that over the past, recent past as well as going forward is the 65 by 65 box hangar has been completed and in operations and has airplanes in it now. Established line instruction for the, and a rental plane. Add another mechanic, upgrade the fuel farm, establish a hardline connection from the self-service fuel. We have in the past or quite often here lately been down because, because of the connection between the self-service fuel and the, and the, and the network that operates that. Update and increase the signage so that we can look a little more professional and, and folks that are visiting us know where to go. Update the hangar lighting to go to LED lighting. Add storage to a T-hanger, basically each one of those T-hangers has a section that really by, by design, or a way that they're designed because of the wingspan of airplanes and what they're putting in there, there's a, there's a corner in each one of those buildings that would be available for storage, but it would require put in the garage storage. So then currently the old terminal, that when we bought the, the new hangar, the, the previous Pro Energy Hangar, the, the old terminal building, we leased to CFC Construction and they're using it as their temporary offices while they're remodeling the trust building. So when they get, get that done, then at that point, that terminal will become available again for different uses. And so we want to remodel that and turn it into something like an overnight stay to make it more convenient to use our airport. And then taxiway servicing and maintenance and then the prossman's runway doing crack ceiling on that. Any discussion?
How fast do we see a return on the rental plane?
Not super quick probably, not a return, no. It's hard to say because it's one of those things you have phone calls about, but until you have it, you'll never know exactly how much it will be used. It will be used more if you have it. But again, it's provide, what, what, what does it do in the grand scheme of things is it provides a service that our local people have to drive somewhere else to get. Because every phone call, I send them to Warsaw, you know, Warrensburg, Marshall, Boonville, Jeff City.
So you do get calls and asking for rental planes?
Yeah, yep, instruction and rental plane, so.
What would be the maintenance, yearly maintenance on that rental plane?
Well, it would be parts, technically speaking, because the labor we do in-house, obviously. You'd probably want to track it so you know, but average rental plane, 2,500 bucks, but you have to do it every hundred hours on a rental. So depends on how, how often you rent it. I, I maintain a Columbia's rental plane and they, they will fly at a hundred hours a month. Now, they have a lot of students and they have three planes and they fly them all about a hundred hours a month. So you would be spending 2,500 to three grand a month.
Wouldn't it be fair to say that the rental would more than offset?
Oh, yeah, it would pay for the cost, yes, that's, that's the cost.
Payback really is the, the recovery of the investment, which after you cover all of those costs, then that's going to be extended out. We kind of talk rough numbers, I mean, we're, we're talking five years at least, somewhere around in there.
Yeah.
You would pay back in five years, he said, okay.
I, I would think, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's rough.
Yeah, yeah. And again, it all depends on, you know, right now, it's, it's a popular thing, you know, you can't fly pilots, so it's a, everyone wants to be a pilot and it's needed.
Yeah, and, and see, some of it too is, is, you know, do you count the gross margin on the fuel sales for when they do that? Because that's part of it, you're creating more, more opportunity for fuel, fuel sales and those kinds of things. Do you count that in your payback? Which I, I don't know, you can make an argument both ways, but no, that's just part of the normal operating payback.
What would be the lifespan on that rental plane?
Unless it's crashed forever. Technically, I mean, we've, you know, most of your older aircraft that we see are, you know, 60s, early 70s, some even older than that.
Is this a new or pre-owned aircraft?
Oh, they would be pre-owned.
This one would be pre-owned?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Thanks, Derek. Okay, the next Transportation Fund is the Street Department. They, you know, part of their, their strategic plan, bring the strategic plan into the complete streets and walkable community from the comprehensive plan, continue the safer routes to school initiatives, including sidewalks. We've made a lot of progress this year on that and we just need to continue those efforts. The equipment purchased to do a larger project in-house, that's, that's going very well. Of course, it took us longer to get the equipment than we had hoped, but since we got in, we've already made some, some great progress with that. They made your street and parking areas for improvement and you'll see these on your, the, the scoring sheet. The 32nd and Limit, that is again a partnership with MoDOT, so we need to get them to go and be signed about it as, as well as allocating some fund to help the crews into it. Clinton Road, doing grants to 32nd Street. The State Fair Boulevard and, and Main Roundabouts. The North Harding and Boonville, 50 Highway to the Airport, the 65 Highway ramps at Main. There again, another MoDOT partnership actually, yeah. And then connects Pro Energy Drive to Oak Grove, 16th and Winchester Roundabout, Roundabout to the Sacagawea Road. The 50 Highway, Katy Trail overpass widening, again, another MoDOT partnership. We did talk just a little bit earlier about the partnership to do the maintenance there, but this was really a bigger, much bigger project of widening that and, and improving that intercept area. 65 Highway in Sacagawea, a traffic light there. And then as far as sidewalks, curbs, gutters, trails. And again, this is somewhat within restrictions on funding, some of these grants that are available, they are only for alternative transportation. We can't use some of these grants for streets. So, you know, again, looking for each of those opportunities or, again, trying to do the, why are we trying to do it first and then where do we get the funding to go do it? The North Central region, there's a grant application for that, our, we'd like to do a grant application for that for the sidewalks replacement in that area. Sidewalk State Fair Boulevard, 50 Highway to 3rd Street to 65 Highway. And then sidewalk 65 Highway 7 to Liberty Park Boulevard. And then Bike Way and Track Depot and to Katy Depot. And then the 16th Street, Complete Street, New York to 65 Highway. And again, a lot of that was discussed in the comprehensive plan as well as last year's strategic plan.
So when we say complete street, does that mean mill and overlay? Does that mean we're going to rebuild like the curbs?
Yeah, it means all kinds of alternative transportation. So it, it means not only automobile tra, accommodating automobile traffic, but pedestrian traffic and bike traffic. So it's a, it's a concept in plan that, I don't know, the comprehensive plan, we talked a lot about that complete street concept.
The comprehensive plan, Amanda, do you have any other?
I know, but I understand that. I, I guess one of my things that concerns me that I haven't been able to get everybody else concerned about is not only sidewalks are curbing. And, and we have so many places now where we don't have any reservoir at the side of the road anymore for water, the crown's gone from the center, the curb's disappeared on the side. And...
Yeah, and that's true.
I just like to focus this a little bit more at times, you know, I think, I go up and down Grand all the time and from Clinton Road basically down to 16th, there's, there's curb at some points, there's not curb at other points and you can already see where there's no curb, that water's getting underneath that pavement and it's already having an effect on the paving and putting...
Yeah, that, that drives me nuts as well. It's when you go and, going down a road and, and that's where, you know, right or wrong, we did, in the past, we did that, that cost sharing agreements with...
You know, I like to try to get, that was through the water department, wasn't it? Somehow you could do that and it would go, years ago, we, Val and I did curbing on 24th and, and we just paid an additional amount on our water bill, I think, for, I don't want to say it was distributed over five or 10 years, it would have been the early 90s.
Yeah, but, but my, my impression is that's how we ended up with some of these, is you get agreement on this part of the road and so then you're driving down the road and you got a nice curb and gutter and then you go to this section where you couldn't get agreement. And so then it's the narrower road with that with the big ditches and all of that.
Yeah, but now there's a point where we've got curbs within that's now deteriorated or gone, somebody's got to replace. I mean, as far as it's cost... It's bad if you do and definitely don't.
Yeah, curbing is expensive. I, last, I think it was $37 a foot, right? So that's...
I get, I get it and I know sidewalks are more popular to fix, but they both have an effect on our service to our community.
The, in our comp plan gives a good definition of complete streets. A complete street is a roadway that is designed to be safe for all types of users of transportation network. User types can include motorists, bicyclists and pedestrians. Complete streets are given special attention to their design and the way they effectively encourage walking and biking. Design elements such as wider sidewalks, dedicated bike lanes, street trees and pedestrian scaled roadway elements form a cohesive reinforcement for the increasing of safety and economic vitality of the roadway network.
I know, and that drives me crazy because not one place in that definition was the word curb mentioned, but still, a street to me, when I say a complete street in our municipal setting, it means the curb on each side and...
And everything that I've seen as far as like regards to grants at federal level, there is no money for mill and overlay work of roadway surface. That's just what I've seen. Is that what you've seen too, Brenda, or?
My hope is focused on the SS4A action grant that we've applied for because that will get us to the billion dollar ARPA-like money, they call it, I think, bill money that would allow for complete street development. So they've set aside federal money for it and you can laugh, but the bottom line is curb goes in when the street goes in and we are not rebuilding streets, we are simply milling and overlaying. So at the point that you put the curb in, you're required to meet the ADA requirements for sidewalk. So it's a much larger planning initiative because at the point that you rebuild a street and do not make your sidewalks ADA compliant, then you are liable for anyone that might not be able to use a sidewalk.
Which affects at least the curb at the corners, generally speaking, right? Because you, a lot of times you'd have to take out curb and put back in the sloping curb right down to the pavement and little sads that are...
Part of, so Steve, part of what I would focus you on at this point is that the first five years I served as your Public Works Director, we couldn't even fund mill and overlay.
No, I'm not complaining at all, I'm just, I'm just saying we keep going down this path and, and it's not, I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just saying that...
I'm, I'm just trying to...
I mean, we need to pay attention to our curbs at some point or find a program or, or do something because I hate to pave something and then see it coming apart in sections of that street earlier than it should.
If, if you would notice the streets that we focused on this year to pave either have all curbs or no curbs and part of it is we know this federal money is coming that would allow us to replace both curb, street and sidewalk.
All right.
Yeah, it's coming, but you have, it's all very structured, you know, I think sometimes...
I know, I, I, I'm not, I just think I wanted, I just, I've made my point.
Yeah, and I think what I'm...
Wouldn't the stormwater have some overlap into that as well? Because part of stormwater control is the curb and guttering structures and all of that.
Yeah, some of it, definitely the 16th Street project. But MoDOT's money frequently, when we ask for it, and, and we've been successful with the TAP project, is it includes curb because it's just unexpected. But again, the problem we've got is what has historically happened, so it's going to take time to get it corrected. And that's why we're spending so much time planning before we drop new programs on the street is so that when we develop the street, it comes out as a complete street and we don't continue where we've got a block of curb and then no curb.
So, so I guess my general question to everybody in the room is, would you support going back to that program that I guess I'm the only one that remembers or incorrectly remembers where a citizen that owned property could, or Amy's here, a park department director could decide to share the cost of curbing all the way around Katy Park to improve that area? I'm just, you started it when you made your presentation, you brought me up. Anyway, would you support something where we could create something like that again where someone would say, hey, I want to have curbing along my property and we could prorate it through several years and let them have access to...
I don't know anyone that would answer that question other than sure, we can support it. But again, I'll take you back to Kelvin's point, which is at the moment, you could have six people in that block and four of them would want it and two wouldn't. And what can we do about the two blocks?
But we're further along.
Yeah.
What, what does that do to your ADA compliance though? Because now you've got this fragmented street where part of it, you have to, part of the sidewalks have to be ADA compliant, part of them don't.
Not sidewalks, curb, but, but the curb at the corners, we would, to be ADA compliant, generally speaking, it's at the corners.
Unless the property owner who didn't want to participate was at the corner.
Yeah.
That's why, this one is where John and I have been talking, we've got the TAP grant, we've got the CDDG grant. We're going to start having community meetings and talking to people and finding out what people are willing to do to get new curb, to get additional sidewalk or drive approaches that we haven't been able to fund in the past. It's going to have more community involvement.
Sure, I'd like to throw out too, there, there are mechanisms that you can do that to where it's, it's kind of a majority rule, to where you can do it, it's either a community improvement district or a neighborhood improvement district to where, you know, and it's the majority, if the majority want to have, you know, in that neighborhood, want to have their, their street upgraded to curb, sidewalk, all of that kind of good stuff, then you can create that, that NID or that community improvement district, then it's a vote of the people, but then they all share in the cost of it.
So, so a great example of that for me in my board would be Clinton Road. We're going to, one of the, one of the things that is a major artery on our, on our plan, I thought we said 24th Street, but then 24th Street ran into Clinton Road there. And so basically from 65 to coming down Clinton, maybe 24th is a major artery, once it hits, or maybe Clinton Road is a major artery all, all the way down to Grand, I can't remember. But that's one of the major arteries that we've identified in our plan, virtually uncurbed. And, and that major artery, if it were curved, would create a much better improvement in someone's perception as they come into our city, so about it, not enough.
You know, back years ago, if a person wasn't curb footed in and they lived in the middle of a block, they would do it. But then it'd start to settle and crack and everything. So now I understand that they won't put curb in unless the whole block wants to have it done. Is that true?
No, I don't think we've denied anybody, but...
Because like I said, you know, if somebody living in the middle of a block had the curb footed in and there's three or four houses on each side of them, and then the curb starts to settle and tear apart and everything, and I thought we had an ordinance where we wouldn't do that unless the whole block wanted this done.
Not that I'm aware of.
That's not true?
I, I don't know of any ordinance of that.
I don't. I don't, I don't know any either.
Also, on Fifty Highway, Katy Trail overpass widening, were they talking about taking that wall out to make it wider through there?
I was going to ask about that too. I thought that was a ten million dollar, not a one million dollar.
Well, I just put in there a million dollars as, you know, most of the cost is going to have to be borne by MoDOT. So I just can put it in there as, you know, potentially the city participating in that cost.
And what.
Because what we'd like to do is, is create more left turn lanes there.
Oh, yeah.
To benefit our other connection streets. So I think MoDOT's going to want us to participate in where our other intersections are. So I, I mean, I just threw a, threw a number in there for sake of, of ranking as, you know, as F two, where we allocate city funds.
So we allocate a million trying to tie MoDOT into allocating nine million or fifty a number. How many accidents we have going through that overpass in a year?
Yes, yes. That's a scary feeling.
Is that, is that a traffic point where we have more accidents than normal?
I know twenty years ago when I drove a tow truck from Macinonese, I was there at least three times a week picking up a car.
So frankly, the project that I have been talking to MoDOT about starts at Hancock and continues to Massachusetts because that is where the, the traffic flow problem is. You don't have left ability off Massachusetts in a single lane. And that's because you're reducing down to get under the underpass. So you actually start at the top of the hill and go all the way to the bottom.
Yeah. I agree, Brenda. And I think, I think for, you know, the eastern side of the city, if we saw that improvement and we saw an improvement out at the railroad overpass on our east city limits, I think it's.
So the.
Major impact. And don't we need something anyway when we were doing all that transportation?
So the most, the money that is, may be available if we get the Action Plant Grant is actually straight from US DOT. And it requires a local match that could be provided by the city. MoDOT could provide thirty percent and the Fed would then provide fifty percent. So that's why, when Kelvin's projecting numbers, the piece that we have is probably the engineering piece, quite frankly. And the rest of the construction piece would fall to the bigger funders.
I just remembered a bigger number and I thought maybe it was a decimal. Do you have some?
There are two areas in my ward that are in grave need of attention. And I thought we had them on the planning presentation within the last couple of months. Toston Hill subdivision and Main Street from State Fair to probably Winchester. Both of those areas, and we've talked about them, really, am I missing it or?
I think what you're missing is these are really construction projects. And that's a paving project that you're talking about.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put on the ranking sheet all of the maintenance type projects.
Were those being individual?
Yeah. Well, you know, I mean, you'll certainly get a chance to weigh in on that when we do the budget piece.
Yes.
You know, because we will, we will weigh each of those projects out. And, and so that'll be the discussion as to which ones make the, you know, how we divide up the, the maintenance budget.
Fair enough. I know those will probably be privateer items. So I know generally we've had them in a ranking. So.
Yeah.
I can know that we all agree that they really need attention.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, you know, we kind of went both ways on that in the ranking. One year when I included them all, then everybody was kind of like, well, gosh, how do I rank?
How do you do that?
Because it, and it becomes a bigger number of rankings to put in order. And so this year I, I just tried to, to narrow it down to these major initiatives of, of, you know, changing the landscape, if you will. And then those, as far as maintenance, we will deal with those when we get to the budget works.
Okay. That's good. Thank you very much.
No, move along.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Alley and right away maintenance, the grounds maintenance on city owned property, the right of way mowing and maintenance, the maintain a hundred and fifty-nine miles of alley. And then the brush and weed abasements, the initiatives here, basically using the millings from the road projects, particularly now with our home milling machine and, and our bigger milling machine, as well as the paving machine. We have more of those millings that we can use. And they've been used in most of the services. Okay. Parks and Recreation, Amy came in and provided her strategic plan that she works with the park board with. And, you know, again, we, we don't do rankings on that at the city council because you all have a park board that you appoint. And the statutory deal on the, on the park board, the park board has complete budget authority over the property tax. And then, so it's kind of a shared deal. You all choose to allocate all of the sales tax that, that we do, that you have authority over, to the same system. So in, in my opinion, it works very well. So we basically have delegated the authority to the budget, to the park board. But it does relate to, as a whole, what the city is doing. And so I think it's very important to go through that. And it's the general direction of the city. So they, they provide programs and facilities that enhance the quality of life, a big important piece for the quality of life for our citizens. The top accomplishments over the last, recent time is the Hecker Community Center opened last March, and they have over four thousand members. The Hubbard Flashpad was opened. The Light Up Liberty has continued to expand. And, and you'll see also down below that she's planning on, on expanding that even more. The electrical improvements that went along with that expansion, Art in the Park has, has had some important additions. The Liberty Park Bridge was repaired. Over two hundred new programs added. A hundred trees were planted and a thousand tulips. Centennial Field has seen, have seen some improvements. And then Plan for 2024, a big piece of how they progress through 2024 will depend upon the award of the grant that, that they applied for, for the Liberty Stadium improvement. If they get that, that will take up a lot of their time and effort and to get that done. But then beyond that, the RFQ for the outdoor aquatic center. We all know that our pools, our outdoor pools are, are nearing the end of their life, I guess is a fair way to say that. And so Amy's put together a plan and worked with the park board. Basically, as we look at that, we will look at changing them to true aquatic centers as opposed to pools. So, so right now we're just in the design phase, so trying to figure out what that will be and where they'll be located, how it will be located, and those kinds of things. The new train engine, we got the new train house up and running, but then, then the, then the engine shop crashed. So Light Up Liberty, Phase Four, the Hecker Community Center, looking at corporate memberships there, ways to enhance the use of that. Liberty Playground, tournaments and program additions. They'll continue to add programs that they, to benefit the community. Improvements at Convention Hall, now that we've uploaded much of those programs to Hecker, it will be now important to make improvements at Convention Hall, continue to use that. And then finally, the dog park and, at the animal shelter and Centennial, if the Liberty Stadium grants are not received, then that's, that's where we'll put some focus. Any questions, conversation with Amy? And did I leave out anything huge?
At Convention Hall, there was talk one time about maybe putting a roof back over the porch. Is that true?
That is in the master plan, but that would be, it was the twentieth year of the master plan. We're now working at fifteen years. That's a goal I have before I retire is to put that porch back up there.
That's historical. And I don't know if you could get some additional grants because that's the way it was originally built. John, do you know, or you guys been talking?
We, we could certainly talk about historic preservation grants.
Okay.
So we'll look at it here.
Okay, appreciate that.
Well, I just heard she can't retire until she gets.
Exactly. Yes, you guys might want to wait for a while. Just kidding. But that was the last thing that we had on that master plan was, because that is something I'd really like to see. I've seen so many pictures of it. You know, building, building was built nineteen eleven. It's a jewel of the community, all the memories and people that have been through there. I think it would look really nice to have that back on there.
Same architect as the, some of the buildings at Fairgrounds.
Yes.
All the riding grass that we're currently working on, because it's Canada, so that is two or three years.
That'd be nice to have a roof put back over that porch, that Convention Hall. If we could get a grant through the historical buildings.
Right. And part of our reason for doing that, you know, in the long term, what we looked at is hopefully we'll have, by then we hope to have maybe an indoor soccer facility. Because right now Convention Hall is really used for gymnastics, dance, esports, and then football. So in December, January, February, football's over there, about eighteen hours a day. So then what we were hoping to is to make Convention Hall more of a rental facility for wedding receptions and gatherings and to make it a little bit more historic and a little more classier as well. So that was our reason for adding that.
Amy, I have a question.
Yes.
Over there at Centennial Park in the, where the two fields, the big fields are together.
Yes.
In the senior league, I got grandsons that are playing there. And I went out there last year to watch some of their games. And, and the concession stands aren't open.
Yeah, so that was one thing. Last year, we, we did close down the, down the baseball concession stands. We were losing over eighteen thousand dollars a year running the baseball concessions. So we looked at trying to get other businesses. I know we've already been working with some food vendors for next year to do food trucks. But we've been working with our local group to actually run the baseball concessions. But then when they started to run the numbers, they realized quickly that they would be losing more than we were losing. So part of that was we were, we were only bringing in, our deposits out there at John Mays and Paul Nichols, our best nights would be a hundred and fifteen dollars. So with minimum wage going up and the cost of food, it just was one where concessions should be a moneymaker for us, not a break even, let alone losing. So that was the reason for, the park board evaluated it and looked at it and made the decision to close it. We pushed really hard to educate the public and let the coaches know and the players know. We bought every baseball player a water bottle so they would bring their water bottle to the game. But it was just one of those things that we can't be, I don't think the, the taxpayers should be paying for the concessions to be operating. So that was our reason for that.
I understand. I just, you know, I.
Oh, no, and, and ask, because if you want to explain that.
All these, all these people complaining because they can't go get a candy bar.
Yeah.
Now, now I have an answer.
Right. And I think one of the things too, you come for one game. On our competitive nights, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we would do a little bit better, not much. But they would play two games, the night only competitive leagues, live there a little bit longer. But when you're there for an hour, hour and a half, nowadays mom's already got her bag packed full of food. They're running, they're, they're leaving, they're not staying after the game. And we're seeing that a lot in all parks, snacks department, just with the cost of minimum wage. And just in five years, it's been doubled. We used to be able to pay, pay two dollars, you know, five dollars and twenty-five cents for the employees. And this year we're paying twelve dollars. So we have two staff that are twenty-four dollars an hour. We're not selling enough candy bars. And candy bars, we didn't, we would have to charge a dollar fifty for a candy bar. And we'll be making thirty-three cents off of it. So that's amazing. But thank you for asking to clarify that.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Water Pollution Control Fund. This is the one that we typically move a decimal when we're talking about dollars and cents here, at least once, maybe sometimes twice. But Water Pollution Control Fund treats about one point seven billion gallons of wastewater per year. They're major initiatives. We have completed the, the master plan and model for, and now we're working on implementing the, the outcomes out of that. We talk about it every year and, and we are reaching the deadlines now where we have to upgrade our AC plants and, and then also handle the, the central plant. We have borrowed money in twenty nineteen that is still standing there. And as part of the, the master planning process, we've identified and it's really in designing at this point what, what we need to do to upgrade and rehouse that facility to make it continue to function as it was designed. The north plant, we've been warning you for the last seven years that we need to replace that. And we have now one more year on our permit for copper. And so we, we need to get that done. And then also for E. coli, six more years. And basically, the technology of that plant is old technology that will not remove the copper to, that we need to remove to, to, to fit within the DNR standards. So the only option is to upgrade this technology. We propose that we will enter into a voluntary abasement on consent with the Department of Natural Resources. And we feel that if we drive that, if we move it, we all, we recognize, you know, council recognizes that, that we've got to do these things. And we feel like if, if we admit that and, and work with DNR on what's reasonable and what's realistic about the timeframe and what we can and cannot accomplish, then we'll be more successful. So that's our recommendation to, to work with them on that. We need to transition from Alliance Water Resources to a new contractor. Alliance Resources, basically, they have submitted, formally submitted, and knows now that they, they do not want to continue with the current contract style. They want to either take over all of the permitted facility, hire all of the staff for the facility, or, or not do, do anything with us. So, which my recommendation, and I'm sure Brenda's, from our discussion, would agree with this, we do not want to turn all over, all of the, the staff to them. So that makes us too dependent upon them. And then also we've had some concerns about performance, particularly recently. And no offense, our, our, no intense attendance to them, they're struggling with the same thing. They can't get operators. And, and so turning over the whole process to them is not going to help that situation. They still can't get operators. So, so we, we just think that that's the right way to go. And just as a reminder to you guys, when you're, any of you that are going to the legislative conference in the middle of February, whenever you're talking to legislators down there, if you could bring up that the, the requirements surrounding becoming a Class A operator need to be looked at and examined. Right now, it's the same requirements as going to school and becoming a doctor as far as the timeline. That needs to be shortened. They either need to shorten that timeline or they need to increase the compensation levels to that of the doctor. I don't think they're going to do that, so shorten the timeline. But that's something you guys can bring up when you're down there.
But the state, state issue, not a federal issue? I mean, does it go all the way back up to EPA? Does anybody know?
This is a state issue on the licensing.
And then finally the, uh, implement the ARPA grant for, uh, for stormwater. Anything, any further discussion on that?
Is there a primary source for the copper?
Primary source?
Yeah, I mean, getting into the system.
Well, right now their, uh, their requirements for our, uh, discharge is less than what we would pump out of the ground, the amount of copper that's in the ground.
Naturally.
Yeah, naturally. Uh, the, and Brenda, if you want to expand on this, but basically the DNR, and that's part of why we want to enter into the, the voluntary as opposed to waiting for them to try to put an abatement order on it. Is, is, um, some of the folks in, at DNR believe that it's coming from plants that we know it's not coming from. And so they're, they're looking at, um, putting in pre-treatment requirements that is not going to solve the problem. Am I misstating that?
No, that's exactly where we're at. We have one plant in Sedalia that we know is a copper generator and they're required to sample quarterly and we've not had any excursions from them. Remember the lead rule that I talked about with the service lines for water? That's actually at the EPA level called the lead and copper rule because the majority of copper that you see going through our wastewater plants actually are coming out of copper drinking water lines. Or naturally occurring copper in the ground source water. So it is not that we have manufacturing plants that have a problem. For example, the southeast plant, the one out on, uh, McVeigh, basically, when you go down Goodwill Chapel Road. We don't have any manufacturing plants that go there and periodically will get a hit of copper and we believe it's when people do certain things in the drinking water system.
Water department, um, that department, uh, provides or generates about nine hundred and tw- twenty million gallons of drinking water. Uh, over the, recently, we have completed, uh, three high service pumps and, and variable frequency drives have been replaced. We've rehabilitated a well. Several mains have been replaced in, in those areas, the old country club, the Walnut Hill, South Ingram and Cambridge Drive areas. Um, as far as plans going forward, uh, as Brenda just mentioned again, the lead inventory, which is also copper. Uh, we need to take inventory of all, um, uh, lines that could have lead or lead joints, um, in, in that. And, and, uh, as I understood her, uh, presentation, this is the first time that they've actually required us to go on the other side of the meter and, uh, and take inventory of what's supplying our residents' houses, uh, on the other side of the meter. So, uh, so we'll have to do that. The deadline for that is, is ten sixteen of twenty twenty four. Um, we're extending service to new areas. We're continuing the well rehabs and potential added wells, um, as we implement the master plan there. Uh, also disaster planning, um, you know, how would we provide water, uh, safe water in the, in the event of a disaster? So we need to, uh, upgrade our plans there. And then also adding a coin operated bulk water dispenser and then, uh, looking at a shared vacuum truck for hydro excavating between the, uh, water and service.
Question on that, uh, lead inventory. A majority of individuals here in Sedalia, that they're, they're coming off the chain now because it sounds like they're going to have to put money into putting new pipes inside their home. And I understand the problem. I mean, if you're on a fixed income and we, the city, come in and say, okay, up to your house, we're going to take care of that. But inside your house, you've got to take care of that. What if they can't? What if they don't? Is there another, uh, avenue in which the people that are saying you got to do this is going to say, okay, we'll pay for that? They are saying that there will be federal grant funds available. They have not publicly announced a specific program.
I kind of have a privacy concern with regard to that, just coming in, I mean, the idea of somebody coming in and taking photos of pipes in my home. I'm not going to have that. I'm.
I'm just going to tell you upfront, I've had some, uh, people that have been with the water department for thirty, thirty-five years tell me, I don't know if I want to still work here if we have to go into people's homes. Uh, they know that you, there's questions, your own, um.
I personally, I feel very strongly about that. If you're, if you're not invited in by me, you are not allowed in my home without a warrant. Uh, and maybe you can get a warrant for that, I don't know, but I'm going to.
So bear in mind, none of the rules, none of the specifications have, have come out to a level other than we are being instructed through webinars and training presented, presented by, uh, US EPA and DNR that we will be responsible for this. I'm not exactly sure what gives us the authority to cross into private property.
I mean, we've all taken an oath to hold the, the constitution. I, that, that seems like that's a violation of that.
I agree with you, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, you know, going into the connection into their house, that's one thing. But going inside their house and saying, you got to do this, you got to do this, you got to do this.
Yeah.
You didn't make that house payment, you're not coming in here telling me what to do.
Well, I'll, I'll be the devil's advocate on this. I mean, you want to know if you've got lead and you've got young children and that type of thing, right? So there may be parents that, that want to know and if they, if we ask them and they voluntarily say, yeah, come in and you're, you're permitted to come in and check and let us know.
And voluntarily, that's one.
That's why, that, that requires me to go and at this point.
We're coming in your house and taking pictures of your pipes, whether you like it or not.
No, 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 yeah, I agree with you, Andrew, but at the other side of this, some people may want to know. If they want to know.
Oh, yeah. I, I, I one hundred percent agree. You're, you're going to have those that are going to say, oh, yeah, come on in and do that. But your majority is going to say, you're not coming up in here and telling me how to do this. That's your majority. And right now we've got, I, I've got elderly within my district and my area that's coming to me and saying, are you kidding me? They are going to come to my house and they're going to tear out these pipes, they're going to do this and that and that. Well, what if they destroy the floor that they're tearing up and all that? And I'm sitting there going, I don't know. I agree with what you're saying, but I don't know.
What you want to tell them? Are they going to pay for it and do it or go tear my pipes out?
This deadline is just for the inventory, to know what's lead and what's not.
Right, so bear in mind, first deadline is for the inventory. Second deadline is for complete rehabilitation. So they set certain scales and they're telling us that they believe that after October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, you will be required for each of the next ten years to replace ten percent of the lead service lines that you identify through your inventory. Again, they do not at this point explain to us how you would go about changing out pipe on private property. They also don't explain that in a time where there's not enough plumbers, just, I mean, right now I've got people calling, telling me, uh, Brenda, can you tell me anybody that would come out and replace a hot water heater for me? Because I've been told locally it may take up to ten weeks to get someone. And then we're talking about a project like this. So I'm not sure how, I hate to say this because they're my, the people that permit me. I'm not sure what thought out they have, have completed this up until now when there's not enough skilled labor at the local level to complete the project as they present it.
Yeah, the whole plumber issue, I mean, you try to get somebody to come in and retrofit plumbing on an old home. Good luck, you're not going to find them. They're out, those, any plumbers that are getting trained are out doing new construction because that's where they, they can make money quick.
Right, and, and part of, you know, our concern, you'll talk to everybody that does this, the presence of lead solder on a pipe does not mean there's lead in your drinking water. The only potential contamination is if that pipe is burst at that connection and then you may have a problem. Okay. Well, if you would keep us abreast of how that comes down, I would very much appreciate it. To be able to tell the individuals what's going to happen.
I went to that seminar in MML and the vast, my recollection is the vast majority of lead pipe service that coming to the meter in Missouri is in the St. Louis area. So I, I don't, before we, our heads explode, and I've asked her and then she really.
I can tell you.
She's got any prediction on how much lead we've got in Sedalia going into meters?
We know that, we know that we have five thousand, uh, customers that we do not know if there's any connection. That's, and that's what we need to identify. We know that in the, uh, project that we just finished with, uh, the twelve point seven million, we had roughly twelve to fifteen percent that had either a lead service line or a lead jointed pipe somewhere within the system that connected them from the meter to the house.
What was the twelve point seven, you mean nationally?
No, we just finished, we just finished the twelve point seven million dollar water line replacement project here.
Okay.
And of the homes that we touched, because we replaced service lines to every home, that was somewhere between twelve and fifteen percent that had something that would have qualified to have been shown on this lead inventory.
Was, was it across the whole community or was it in a particular location?
Uh, we replaced all the pipes.
The lead, where, I know, but where was the majority? Was there one area that was more prevalent with lead connection than others or one age group or probably the older homes? I didn't want to say that, that's.
Any home built before nineteen eighty-three may have a lead source in their water system.
Keep in mind that thirteen million dollar project was, uh, intentionally aimed at the older system, the older mains, because that's, that's what it was designed to do.
Yeah, I, I would suspect.
So if we would have, I would suspect that that was the higher percentage of, of where we identified, you know, that we still had lead mains or not lead mains, but lead jointed mains.
So, so the good news is Sedalia has already probably addressed a lot of this.
Yeah, I would, I would suspect that, that the, uh, when we do the inventory of the city's portion, the mains, then, and yeah, we're going to, we're going to see a, a lot lesser percentage going forward because we are replacing the older ones first.
We don't replace anything with lead. If we identify anything that has lead, it's immediately replaced. But what we do not have and have not had is any authority other than to notify the homeowner that we noticed lead on their side of the meter. And that's where we're a little blind as to what may be out there.
But I, I think we've heard very, uh, emphatically that, you know, council has concerns about us going on the other side of the meter. Uh, we will, um, uh, follow that direction and, and keep you all informed. Thank you. Uh, sanitation and recycling, uh, the sanitation, uh, department collects residential solid waste weekly. Uh, we, over the last year, have collected about fourteen million pounds. The, we also do the twice monthly yard waste pickup for an added fee. The clean sweeps, we, during those, we collected about four hundred and thirty-seven thousand pounds of, of bulky waste. Neighborhood cleanups and abatements, the bulky waste schedule on demand for an added fee. And then the container drop off and collection. And as we've talked, uh, the last few years, uh, this is really the best value and, and really the best way to do the, um, uh, the bulky cleanups. And, uh, so we want to continue to promote that and, and get that out there. Uh, we also manage the drop off materials management side for glass, Pettis County Recycling, yard waste, um, the household hazardous waste and the electronics and appliance. We do the refrigerant removal there. And, uh, as far as going forward, we want to continue our focus on safety. Uh, it is one of the most dangerous jobs in, uh, specifically, so, uh, we want to do all we can to keep our employees safe. The citizen engagement, we want to promote the container use that we talked about. The grapple truck needs to be, one of our grapple trucks is at, at the point that it's needing replacement. And then finally, uh, you know, as we've been struggling and, and council has, um, uh, has been aware and, and, you know, working with us to focus on that is, is to balance the budget. We, um, um, this used to be part of the general fund and so it was one of those that we were basically using tax dollars to, uh, to offset the, the cost of providing sanitary, uh, sanitation services to the residents. And, uh, uh, and so when we separate that, separated it out into its own enterprise fund, we had, uh, first of all, we did that to identify where, where that was. And, um, uh, we did not want to just all of a sudden jump up the fees. Um, so we've been working on gradually increasing those fees over time as well as working on the operation. We went from twice weekly pickup to once weekly pickup. We also went to the, I call them the one-armed band, it's the, um, the, the automated truck system so that it takes, basically what used to be three people to, uh, to run around now can be run with one, one person. And, uh, but then there, there was the cost of those trucks and the containers and that. And, uh, and so we're, uh, still focusing, we are close, uh, this year, we were very close and we'll, we'll try to make another jump again this year to get us to the breaking point.
I'd like to make a comment. I've had several people complain about people that taking their trash cam back off the street and leaving it there. Or, or even, uh, having the garbage up over the top of their, uh, container and it blows all over the street. They said, matter of fact, they know one town that will give you a citation if your lead isn't down on their flat. And so I like to see us do something fast that, you know, because all over town, you know, you see them sitting there for a whole week or they got trashed up four or five feet high, taller than the, the trash container. It blows all over the town and.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I'm not sure on the overflowing containers, but I do know that, that it is, they are only allowed to put it out twenty-four hours in advance of the, their scheduled pickup. And then it's supposed to be picked up by twenty-four hours, uh, after their, their scheduled pickup. Uh, so we can, uh, cite them now for leaving their trash camp, their container. Yeah, now, we've talked about that as far as, you know, the priority level and the practicality of, uh, of, of being able to staff that. But, but yeah, uh, don't hesitate to, to notify either code enforcement or sanitation and we'll, 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 uh, at least take the most egregious for, uh, the, the.
Is this a, is this a concern that everybody shares on the council?
I don't share that concern.
Yeah, you, what about everybody else?
I have a spouse that's out there when they're dumping it's fine. Get us to out there long enough. I mean, I don't see this happening within the two or three blocks of where I'm at. It's like as soon as that garbage truck is gone, they're taking them back.
Yeah. I mean, my major concern is overfilled and then I truly think Sedalia gets a lot of trash, um, one way or another from the county. That, I, I, I see overfilled bin after bin after bin and, and I mean, if they've been going through every week, it'd take quite a few people to generate the trash that I see in some of them.
But about bringing them back from the curb?
Well, yeah, I can, I, I agree with, there's, I've, I've visited several people in, in Fort Ford, knocked on the door and asked them, and you know, I, when I. And you know, I, when I do that, they usually, gee, I didn't know I really needed to. It's usually because in my, the ones I've dealt with, it'd be one person and there'd be a whole street where everybody takes them back. And I just go knock on the door and leave them there. But, but you're, yeah, it's a concern, but overflowing's a problem for me.
I, I don't think we necessarily need to have a code enforcement going out and right stuff. Perhaps we need to ask something for water bill thing. Remember, we can have them out twenty-four hours before, but getting back before twenty-four hours after.
That's a good idea.
Rather than putting it in-
Well, it's civic pride.
That, that, make sure that's communicated everywhere. Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, I think it's civic pride and I, I have a lot of people have, or several people have said to me, you know, they, they're not attracted when they're out on the curb all week. So yeah, civic pride, I, I think we're all-
I, I think our drivers of the trucks will be proud of what they do. I mean, you know, they, they probably have their self-esteem that, man, I'm a trash man, there's no glory in that, but it is a big deal. Because-
It's one of the, uh, top five most dangerous jobs.
Yeah, Thursday, Thursday, I was coming down twentieth street and they had a truck out there that had the rear loaders on it 'cause their, their, their armed truck had broke down. Two guys on the back putting the, the dump, the container on the back of it, dumping it into the truck and then they'd just slam it over to the curb and it, that's where late, right there. I stopped and, and got the, and they were all down the road and they turned and I didn't catch up to them. But, you know, I mean, I think our drivers need to understand that, you know, that, that there is prestige about this job. They're doing something that not everybody wants to do. My parents made their money from picking up trash in Kansas City and they're multimillionaires. So, you know, I, uh, I don't see a problem with it. Uh, they just need to have, they need to have pride and want to do it too.
Yeah, maybe we need to do a better job of showing them, but we appreciate them. I mean, it is one of the top five most dangerous jobs and, uh, if you wanna shut things down, you shut, you make it bad, you go pick up the trash and see what happens.
And I don't, you know, I'm just gonna bring this up while we're on Thursday. I don't know what the, what the council felt about the county wanting to make another landfill or whatever. But I, uh, David Dick asked me my opinion on it and I gave him, I'm, I'm quick to give you my opinion. My opinion was, well, why are we allowing this company that owns the trash landfill to bring the trash from Warrensburg and Benton County? Let Benton County have their own landfill. Let Marshall have their own landfill. Let Warrensburg have their own landfill. Let Kansas City have their own landfill. Land, there's seven landfills in Kansas City. The reason they're bringing it here is because BFI owns those landfills and they charge way more than what this landfill's charging here. So I think that needs to stop. And, and Pettis County, and I know that's a Pettis County deal, but I'm gonna bring it up. Pett, landfill needs to be for Pettis County in Sedalia, Missouri. Pettis County wouldn't be Pettis County without Sedalia. So I think that, that's my opinion and I, I take it home and think about it.
Unfortunately, that's a mess that the county needs to deal with.
Yeah.
But, but it could affect us.
Oh, yeah, we, we-
If we have to start sending our trucks somewhere else because this landfill's full, okay? Now, then you will, then you're gonna look at it. You know, when it's, when it costs, what's the cost of a load of trucks now? Fifty dollars?
Anyway, yeah.
At least?
It costs, uh, off the top of my head, just over thirty-three dollars a ton.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the city's rate, if you're a private individual, it's double that. The only thing that I will throw into this because I do monitor this, um, is that it's an Interstate Commerce Commission issue. So you can't prevent waste from traveling outside or into a county. And unfortunately, there is now only one remaining landfill in Kansas City that is open. The others have all been filled and are closed and that's why they're transporting waste here.
That's why my parents sold the route ten years ago. They, they sold, they sold their routes, all their trucks, thirty trucks to BFI because BFI went and bought the landfill so, uh, you know, to, to control that. We used to dump our trucks for like twenty-five dollars a load, but we used to also pick a house up for three dollars and fifty cents a month, two-day service. So, uh, two times a week, I should say. But anyway, I just, I just think that's something that, you know, we need to keep an eye on uh, be, because it could affect us big time if you start having to add the fuel and what it takes to go elsewhere to dump our trucks.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, actually, uh, uh, we are at the point to do this, uh, other items for consideration. And I, I understand lunch is here for us. Uh, so if you wanna break a little bit early and grab your lunch, if you all don't mind, I can talk to you while you eat. And we can make up some time.
I have a request. The department heads that are here, if they could, look at the things that they're asking for and they run them and give it to you for, give me an idea, is that possible while they're eating?
Sure.
All zero? It just gives, it just gives me an idea of what you think is number one.
I'm surprised he didn't have a quick comeback on that. You try? Well, another request, department heads, you guys go eat first. So go grab your food and then council. Great, if you all wanna go ahead and, and grab something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been, and my, my brother was, has been saying snow come. Winter, yeah.
Winter's coming.
Yeah, they're, they're tracking snow, I mean, it's not heavy snow or bad snow, but they're telling you.
Forty percent, fifty percent now.
There is always money on fuel, so.
Right.
All along.
So those trucks, right there.
Also. Forty-two, thirty-three dollars. I just say forty to forty-five an hour. Yeah, so over a five day period, that's a flyer about thirty hours. So it's really hard to get.
Now, please.
You rent the aircraft and pay the instructor. Right, so, I mean, when somebody comes in for, for training, they would pay, took the city one fee for the aircraft and then they would pay the instructor.
Or, yeah, there's, there's two ways to do that, you know, like, uh,
Are they just talking like they're- You're not a foot apart from the-
I get pictures for like sixteen hundred years, I thought it was seven.
That'd be a little messy, mom. Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, well, well, that's, that's your parents.
I like, I like, I like Freddy. I'm not a chicken chick man, but I, I like Freddy. He doesn't, he doesn't get the least of nothing.
Like a trainee, you know, say-
Yeah, all of these trucks, yeah, I think it's- If you want to rent it, you can rent it. How that works, most places that rent airplanes, if you wanna check it out, it's like, I mean, it's like three hours a day. Or something like that. And you say, five, then it shifts to that facility, that could be a bunch.
Yeah.
Right, because that's the time that you can be flying it here.
Yeah.
So you're gonna automatically get charged three hours a day, then by the way.
Yeah, it'd be a sitting.
There wouldn't be a different cost, one for actual operation and one for sitting?
For-
I mean, 'cause you're not putting any, uh, any, any additional stress on the aircraft, which is sitting in a, in a, you know, taking the taxi. So we used to, for, for service, for when we would have computer work done, this guy was charging one fee for actually working on the equipment. But then him getting there, he was charging another fee, but he's sitting on the aircraft waiting, but he's, it still is, it's not his time.
Well, now it's just being the regular rate because, you know, six feet down there, it's not the right here.
Yeah.
Try to make it up. About a few hours, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I also like- You should, you should pay one, like, three hours in a day.
You get two people that are worse.
Yeah, they may do an eight-hour day, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna fly, you know, a couple hours a day.
And people that have to keep up with their licenses, come in, do the session goes and be done.
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, those are things we're sitting on.
I can see it.
Are you cold?
Aye, I am too. My body's all right. Alpenio? Palatino? Do you want Palatino? Hold that picture. Well, I'm-
Well, if you all don't mind, we'll go ahead and, um, I'll stop while you eat. But again, you won't, um, um, won't offend me if you're, um, eating or, or get up and go get more or whatever. But, you can, either way, I mean, but you can see it from there, so. Um, but again, intended to be more discussion oriented, but if we can, um, make up some time with, uh, with me talking while you're going, while you're doing, uh, eating that and, um, and there are some places in here I would like to have some discussion. Um, but, uh, um, we'll just, we'll just try to, try to work through it here. Of course, um, when I look at the strategic planning, uh, as we've talked a lot, you know, the majority of our expenditures are in stat. We're a service business, it's not, not a surprise that the, the majority of our expense is in, in waste. Um, you know, we got a December report here recently that, uh, it's down from about two jobs for every job seeker, but we're still at one point seven jobs for every job seeker. So, you know, we're dealing with a couple of things that are, that are forcing that or, or, uh, creating that trend. And first of all, the pandemic created what they call the great resignation where a lot of people decided, you know, hey, it's a, it's just a good time for me to get out of the labor market. So, um, and then also, this is, you know, this is not something that is gonna be over quickly because we have all of us fake boomers that are retiring faster than we have people entering the job market. So, um, this is, this is gonna be a, a constant pressure for a while of, of while the market readjusts. So, um, also, when we looked at some economic reports that I just, just saw, or just recently saw, is, uh, the December average, uh, while it's cooling or the increases are, are slowing down month over month, um, we still in December have four point six percent year-over-year increase nationally in waste. Yet while at the same time, all of the economic indicators, or not all, the, the vast majority of the economic indicators that I keep seeing and keep looking at are all showing, um, huge signs of, of a recession is coming. But I hate to overuse the, overuse term unprecedented, but, uh, we are again in unprecedented times that are continuing to be in unprecedented times with this labor market being so tight yet everything else is pointing towards recession. Um, the, uh, yield curve on, uh, treasuries is the most inverted that it has been since, I think it was nineteen ninety- Um, the, uh, yield curve on, uh, Treasury is the most inverted that it has been since, I think it was 1992, um, that is, it was the most inverted the yield curve has been. Historically, every time the yield curve has been, has been inverted for any, any length of time, a recession follows. So, uh, you know, whether you believe history or not, um, that's, that's what is indicated. I also saw a report that, uh, last year's standard and force, uh, uh, performance was the worst it's been since the Great Recession. So, uh, for the, for the calendar year that just ended. So again, indic- indications are common that, 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 you know, a, a recession is on its way, but we've gotta get past that 1.7, uh, jobs or seekers for every job that is, or every, 1.7 jobs for every person speaking about before the labor market's gonna... As we look at that, we're gonna have to work, uh, hard again this year on our wages, um, and do as much as we can while, again, not trying to mess up the structure that we have, uh, so that when the recession does hit, we're not, uh, able to adjust to that or, or create flexibility that we won't be able to deal with, so. Likewise, benefits, you know, benefits are very important, um, and, uh, for us, for the city, as I see it, it is one of the ways that we are able to compete with the private sector, um, but then, right now, with the labor market that it is, cash talks, you know? I mean, right now, uh, most of the people are just looking at wages, not as benefits, or they're less willing to give up wages for benefits as they have in the past, so. I think that pendulum will come back, I just can't tell you when and, um, and how far it's gonna go before it comes back, so.
It creates a pretty complex situation. I mean, before, historically, whenever you had the numbers that were coming in, that we had to come up with, you're in a recession, you, your job's on the line, possibly your buddy's job, you know, and your neighbor's losing his job, with, that what's happened with the baby boomers, that's not happening. So we, the, the numbers are going down, but the jobs are continuing to stay high, uh, because, because unemployment's continuing to stay low, so it's a, it's a weird, weird situation. So we're still in the bidding war.
Yeah. And then, if we wanted to complicate it even more, um, we're adding a third fire station. So as, uh, you're all... Yeah. And, and Chief Irwin was, uh, was talking about, uh, we're gonna have to bring on 12 to 15 more, um, more people, so we can't fill the jobs that we've got open right now, and we're gonna try to hire 16, so. So anyway, all of that to say, again, this year, wages and benefits is gonna be a big piece of our priorities in, in the budget plan. Okay, the next one, uh, we wanted to talk to you about, uh, we being the mayor and I, wanted to talk to you all about, uh, the potential becoming a charter city. And, uh, and what that could or might entail. Um, so, um, we did, uh, have a discussion, a, a very short discussion with, um, with our legal counsel, and talked about what that process really looks like. It does really entail, uh, you all going through and looking at every ordinance, the structure, how we're structured, the council, how the council's structured, how the mayor is structured, how, uh, the staff is structured, all of those kinds of things, as well as all of the ordinances, um, and, and then, uh, basically taking all of that and having meetings and discussions with the public and, um, and then eventually, of those with the people, on how do we wanna, how do we wanna, uh, govern the city of Sedalia? My simplistic way of looking at it is, is we're currently a third-class city, so we operate under the, the, uh, state statutes that regulate third-class cities. The way that that, those state statutes work is that third-class cities, you are allowed to do anything that the, that the statutes allow you to do. Going to a charter form of government, you are allowed to do anything that the statutes forbid, don't forbid you from doing. So that's the big difference, that's the big reason why. Uh, there's a couple of examples, one, uh, recent, a fairly recent example was this whole plumbers board. When we were trying to deal with that, basically the way the state statutes were made up is, is, it, it really is impossible for us to comply with the state statutes and have the plumbers board set up the way that the state statutes dictate that they are. Partially because it's in 1940, it was a piece of legislation that hasn't kept up with the times. So, when we were, uh, looking at that and trying to figure that out, when we were having, uh, legal, uh, research that for us, that's when they came back with, you know, 1940 legislation, um, and when they were, when they did the research to try to figure out, well, how do other communities deal with this? Well, that's when we learned, we are probably the, if not the, we are one of the largest cities that are still a third-class city. The way that other cities deal with that is they're not, they're not living under the third-class rules, they're living under the charter city rules.
Yeah, over, over a regular population, over 15,000, you have to have that plumbers board, uh, according to the statute, but we, again, we, uh, we don't have any plumbers that would want to serve on that board, they're all out busy working. Uh, and so in order to get new plumbers certified within the city of Sedalia, you are supposed to run them through that rule, and we don't have that rule. That would be, it's much more efficient if that was just an administrative process, and if you look at other cities, that's the way they set it up, it's an administrative process, it's not an elected board, that would be, uh, a much better, more efficient way of handling that to where our, our end consumers, the citizens, to do what they need, which is a plumber who's picking their pockets. And that, and that's just one example.
Yeah.
This, this would, uh, it would bring local control to autonomy, we don't have to worry about what, uh, some state representative in Kansas City, or St. Louis, or Columbia, what kind of rules are set up for us, because the citizens of Sedalia are the ones writing the rules here. Uh, it gives us a great amount of flexibility too. Uh, is, one of the things I think can kind of compare that to is, is it's almost like with the statutory cities, it's a franchise. So, uh, you know, Class Three is a McDonald's franchise, you gotta operate under their set of rules, you gotta sell their products. Uh, Hardee's is a, a Class Four, you gotta operate under Hardee's, by the rules, instead of, uh, what to sell, what they're gonna have you sell. But this would be upcoming and writing our rules, i- in, expressing through those rules Sedalia's identity and what's the best form of government for Sedalia. I think it's, uh, an amazing opportunity.
Is there any big downfall to doing it, that you can see?
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot. I think probably for me, that what's so important about becoming a charter city is it really, hopefully will get citizens more involved, because they are gonna have much more voice and control of what's happening in Sedalia, that's super important.
And as far, as far as adapt, and another thing is, is there gonna be a new level of accountability for us as leaders of Sedalia? Uh, that, that is not saying, so, I mean, those are two things, but it is a lot of work and that, the price tag, I don't, you know, that, I know that was a guess on that, uh, that could be north or south of that, but really where you're gonna have the investment and, and the work that it takes is, is...
And it's gonna give us a positive, just to, to piggyback on, on, on what's been already said, is just, I think that's the huge positive, is the amount of community engagement that is forced us to do. It gives, it's basically posed the question to the community, how do you want to be governed? You know, as opposed to somebody, as Mayor Dawson pointed out, somebody in, in, uh, St. Louis thinking that you could be governed in Sedalia Missouri, is Sedalia, Missouri deciding how it, how it wants to be governed. Okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Cross, we, uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, as it, as it relates to, you know, uh, you know, currently, again, we're under the third class, and we've chosen, or, or our predecessors have chosen a city administrator form of government under the third-class rules. We have, uh, and you had posed the question to me, what's different about Mornsford and how they operate versus what? And, you know, that again, as the state statutes say, you can either be a, a third-class city with a city administrator and a, what they call a strong mayor form of government versus a, uh, city manager and a, a, a mayor that's just elected through the, as, among council, as the chair of, of the council. Um, and so, you know, my view and, and my answer to you then was, the charter city allows you to, to not, you don't have to fit in one of those boxes. You can, you can do a full-time mayor, with that, which is what, you know, the, the, uh, the bigger cities do, you know, they, they're, uh, uh, their mayor takes on a different shape, a different form. So what this allows is, is, is that, is, is what form do, what form works for us? And the same way with county, you know, do we wanna go to four-year terms? Do we wanna, you know, uh, do we wanna continue the warrant process? Do we wanna, how do, how do we wanna do it as opposed to how it's dictated, um, at the state?
All right.
I would argue that that, uh, the mayor position's already full-time.
All the, the amount of hours there are already...
All right. Okay, while we're talking about this, anytime I need to see the mayor, I stop down where he works, at his business, guess what? He's not there nine times a day, and where's he at? Now, City Hall. I think it's time for us to have a full-time mayor right here. That's, that's my opinion. And he... Right, yeah. And, uh, he uses his own vehicle, his own gas, uh, uh, do his business, and, and, uh, I think it's a full, uh, it's a full-time job for this guy, like, he's down here 30 hours a week, if not more. And the, the salary's less than 11,000 dollars a year that, that he gets for doing all this work.
Yeah.
And, and I...
But I do, I do enjoy, that, that's why I do this, is I enjoy it, enjoy it.
Well, I know that, but still, I think it's, it's time for us to have a full-time mayor here in Sedalia.
Appreciate that, Mark.
And I'll second that.
Anyone else have an opinion on city council about the full-time mayor?
I think, I think he works more of a full-time now.
He does, he, like I said, each time I wanna see him, he's, he's, he's down here.
If I could jump in on that a little bit, um, um, part of that consideration is that, uh, you know, Mayor Dawson looking for us is in a position, he can do that, you know? Um, you know, our previous mayor was semi-retired and could do that. Uh, the mayor before him was retired and could do that. So what you're really, in my opinion, what you're really looking at, you know, going forward in the future and what the future holds, is there are fewer, is, you know, you're limiting the people that can serve as the mayor, that are in a position in their life financially and, um, and, and work-life balance, that, that they can and are willing to take that on. So, that would be an argument for making a, making a change. Just, if nothing else, to open it up to where there's more people that maybe would like to serve that could serve.
And so I would agree with that, uh, argument, because, well, like my situation, uh, Rachel has a very good job at State Fair Community College, that affords me to be able to do it. But I know that that is a rarity, uh, not everybody can do that, and if you want, if you want diverse government and, and a diverse council and a diverse, uh, you know, diversity within the office of the mayor, you are going to need to take that into consideration. Otherwise, all you're ever gonna end up with is people that are retired, uh, and, and maybe every once in a while, the weirdo with the wife...
Well, a- and that's true, I mean, if you go to a, a four, four-year term and full-time, can you live off 11,000 dollars a year? Making all of your payments and everything, so you have to, if you're gonna do that, then you need to look at that income that you're putting...
And another thing to be concerned about that, that is, even if that, even if we decided to do something like that, that wouldn't apply to me, that wouldn't apply to anybody sitting in this room, that applies to the next person sitting there.
Yeah.
Right, right, and I, I've always thought as far as city council is concerned, their term should be the same as the mayor, because it takes a while to learn this, remember it all out, and it's the mayor constantly changing people in the middle of the, of the stream, that, that's hard.
I've looked that up several times, I think the city council should be a four-year term, she had two-year term.
Yeah, once you get your...
This happened one time, back in 1969, I believe, or, in that area, they had full four-year terms for the city council.
Well, there was a, uh, they, they tried to work through the charter process back then, and part of that was a four-year term. The reason why that failed, though, was just the time the city was a partisan form of government, and so that, that's why it failed, now we're nonpartisan, moving on, that, that... And this is just a small part of, of becoming a charter city.
Well, I, I just want us to approach it as a benefit to our community and for our... You know, we, we've gotta justify this, um, you know, where, in a way that it, it can improve all our city services, it can let us operate in a more efficient way, uh, in governance, you know? Bob will, he'll, Bob will keep running for council, don't worry.
Were you on down from 69, Bob?
He, he told... I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even born in 69.
What'd you say?
I wasn't even born in 69.
Not even I can lie that bad.
But we need to frame it.
Okay, um, we also, uh, you know, as we talked, uh, last year and, and throughout the year, you know, healthcare, uh, the health of our citizens and, um, uh, being able to keep them healthy is a big part of what I think the city should be about. And, um, and as, as we've discussed, uh, you know, the pandemic had a, a, a very adverse effect on our healthcare system, um, and we were not immune to that. Um, you know, we, a couple of years ago, or three years ago, uh, put the, we, and the, you all, the council put the mayor and myself on the board of trustees for the hospitals to try to, um, help figure out how, what we can do to help shore that up. Um, this past year, uh, here very recently, we, uh, the hospital hired a consultant, um, to put together a margin improvement plan, and I will just tell you, I, I've seen, um, that plan, and there are some tough choices that are gonna have to be made at the hospital to, to, uh, to get us in that direction. Um, you know, it's not that, uh, you all have to be directly involved in that, but you will hear some of the, uh, some of the fallout, if you will, from that, you'll have, um, be asked to be in a position to support that and understand the reason, um, that those, uh, those things have to be made to, uh, to shore that up. And the basis is the local control, independent control, that you all passed the resolution to, um, uh, that says that that's what you, uh, desired as, um, uh, as, that's what you desire, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Um, we wanna basically, again, open up the, the, uh, the healthcare system to lead in the health of the citizens... health of the citizens versus providing hospitals and clinics to make them better when they're already sick. And then the property tax ballot initiative that was, again, included in your resolution for staff to investigate. And then continued coordination and collaboration with other providers.
So, speaking of property tax, what about the conversation about the assessor and the assessment? Where is that from? Anywhere?
Uh, yes. We have engaged the State Tax Commission. Uh, earlier this week, I sent a follow-up email to the State Tax Commission. The, they have taken it, taken it on. They, the last conversation or the last course conference that I had with them, they were expecting a, a sales ratio analysis that is, that is their way of looking at the accuracy of the assessment. And, uh, that was supposed to be out in the coming weeks, they said, and so I've asked them if that's available yet and what the results of it are. And then they also said that they were going to have a meeting with him in December, and so I asked for the results of that. So, um, not a lot of updates, other than we have got the attention now through the tax commission and they are at least looking.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Thank you.
We also brought together, um, the, the school districts because it affects them way more than it does us.
Yep.
Um, we have brought together the school districts and really, I don't know, I don't want to call it coalition, but, um, they are all like-minded and all very well in tune with what the issue is and that it's not about increasing people's taxes, it's about making sure that everybody is paying their proportionate share. Um, and it is a very complex issue and it's very hard to explain to people that if your assessment is correct, you're paying more taxes than you should be because your neighbor is undervalued. And so by the way that the Hancock Amendment works, you, these levies go up because the total assessed values are down. So by, if we can get those accurate, and in my data that, that I went through, I went through the last four years worth of sales tax and compared that to assess property values, and it, it was in total fifty-six, fifty-seven percent of what they, um, yeah, they were assessed at fifty-seven percent of what the, what they actually sold for in total. That's not a big problem, but it, it is a problem. I mean, that's, that's, that's not anywhere close to the accuracy we'd like for it to be. But the bigger problem to me was that range in all of those properties that I looked at ranged from eighty-five percent overvalued to a thousand one hundred percent undervalued. And so that disparity is where some people are paying way more than they should be and others are paying way less than they should be. And again, it's not about the, you know, as the, as it came out in the paper, the quotes from Mr. Rory, it's not about us trying to figure out how to get more taxes because that's the way the Hancock Amendment works, it's not going to create more taxes. The only way to create more taxes is voter approval. It is about disparity for the, the way that some people are overpaying and others are underpaying. And then the bigger issue, or not bigger, another issue for me is I know how it works when we're going out and like we're going to try to borrow money for the sewer. When we have to do that, we have a credit rating that is prepared by, say, Standard Horse, which is usually who we use to do our credit rating. One of the things, and really the thing that we get rated down on, on our credit rating every year or every time we go, go and get it updated, is what they call a very weak economy.
I read that and I about fell out of my chair.
Look around Sedalia, a weak economy, are you kidding me?
But where they get their numbers is with the changes in assessed values and also the assessed values to, in comparison to the region and state and national. So when they look at our assessed values, our average home value based on the assessor's assessed value, they're saying our average home price, our home value is, I can't remember the number, but, but basically as compared to the region and, and state, it's way less. So they say that's very weak. And then also the, what they look at probably even more so is the trend. And if you look at the assessed values that we received for twenty-twenty-two, then our real estate inside the city of Sedalia actually went down by two million dollars. That's in spite of thirty-eight million dollars worth of, of new construction that we reported to the assessor. And we know that property values went up in Sedalia. They, they certainly didn't go down. And, and so those numbers don't equate, and, and believe me, Mayor Dawson and I went through all of that with the credit rating agency, and they took that into consideration as much as they could.
The only amount of consideration that they are allowed is a, was a half rub.
Yeah, one, one tick.
And they can move us from a plus to a minus or a minus to an even, you know? That's, that's all the considerations that they're allowed to do that, according to the numbers are wrong.
Yes. So, okay. So if, you know, the folks telling me that, you know, that are the experts in the, in the lending agency, that that cost us up to a half a point in interest just because our credit rating is less than what it should be. And so that is, you know, that is money indirectly out of the taxpayer's pocket that they're not being, and nobody benefits from it.
There's no value getting from that. It is just that ends up going to take some banker's note on the porch. That's, that's all that does.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, I want to hear that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. The comprehensive plan, and again, I'll, I'll try to, try to go through this quickly, but there was four guiding themes to the comprehensive plan, the living opportunities, the thriving economy, the diverse housing, exceptional transportation and infrastructure. So for the first piece, the robust living opportunity, and again, trying to tie our specific plan into keeping that focus in, in what areas here that we're doing to implement with what came out of our comprehensive plan. The Echo Community Center, of course, with a big piece, and we want to continue to grow and enhance that, continue to grow and enhance the recreation, Parks and Recreation Facility. A big piece of that this year would be the, you know, the grand display for the Liberty Stadium. And then also, as we talked, replace and update the outdoor pools with full aquatic centers. So maximize the Katy Trail impact, you'll see that in some of the things and, and just to, to let you know, the code there, the, the blue that you'll see there is when it takes something that you'll be asked to rank. But, uh, those are the things that are in there. The walkable community and then the activation of the app. The thriving economy, what we're working on are the areas there is the retail recruitment. We want to turn that payroll that we create, we want to turn that here. As we create more jobs or more payroll through our, our job creators and our economic development efforts there, we want to give them a place to spend it here so that it creates more jobs and keeps that money turning within, within our community. So, um, we, we did also, you know, through the comprehensive plan as well as the Main Street efforts, we did learn, you know, that we have what they call negative leakage, which, retail leakage, which means that we have more people bringing their dollars to the community than we have people living in the community that take their dollars and shop elsewhere with it. However, we do have positive leakage in a few, few select areas that we, we can really focus on and capitalize on. Uh, you know, the main ones that stuck out to me were the furniture, the grocery, and they, they were talking about the high-end grocery, so, you know, somebody like Ivy or something like that. They're showing that there is enough, um, room to add a high-end grocery in Sedalia without robbing from what's already being spent in our other groceries. So it's not trading one grocer for another, it's adding, there's enough room to add. Restaurants, as a total, the food business, again, we have negative leakage where we have more people spend, coming here to spend their money than we have people taking their money elsewhere. But in the segment of that, where you have seated restaurants for the, not necessarily fine dining, but the step in between the fast food and the fine dining, there is leakage in that area. There's, the, the community would support more seated restaurants. And then the online, online shopping. Again, the jobs there, we, we see that we have twelve thousand people that commute to the area, four jobs, and we have forty-eight, forty-nine hundred that live and work here, and then we have fifty-seven hundred that, that live here but go elsewhere for their employment. Continued redevelopment of downtown, the Broadway and Limit and Sixteenth Street Group, four-door development, and then further capitalization on Railsburg, continued investor growth, and then also add the Steamboat Facility, which we're trying to get going, but trying to push the federal government is, is difficult at that. Uh, we want to leverage our tourism in, in the area specifically, the sports, and we just talked about the Parks and Rec and the Liberty Stadium, that's how that fits into there, the Amtrak area, the Katy Trail, and the State Fairgrounds. And then, um, one thing that I added this year that we didn't even know of when we were talking about the comprehensive plan was the, the idea to pursue a Steamboat Museum opportunity here in the community. It's my understanding, the, um, what's called St. Charles area has fallen apart, and the Marshall area has, is, is not real stable right now, so there is an opportunity. So Councilman Bliss, if you want to mention anything there?
Um, yeah, I, I've been involved in this and know the people that are on the, some, especially one person I worked with, the Steamboat Museum, but I, I think we could, we should at least, and we're planning on getting together and meeting with them pretty quickly and seeing if we could come to some type of, um, opportunity for Sedalia to, to do that. You know, located at, at sixty-five and, and seventy, there's no infrastructure really for them, there's no police, there's no fire protection. They, they had a lot more to build up there. Sedalia's got the hotels, we've got the police, we've got the fire, we've got all the infrastructure. So we're gonna, we're gonna get together, get our calendar together and talk to those folks in the next week or two and see if we can make some progress there. But I'm pretty optimistic that we could at least, uh, put together a real good proposal for them.
At least for it.
But, yeah.
So it looks like that sixty-five and, and seventy juncture there, it looks like it might have happened there, is that what you're thinking?
I, I don't, I, I think Sedalia makes more sense, and I think we can make this sense.
Well.
But, but yeah, I, I think it's, it's all up in the air right now. There was, I think, last week, KCTV Five had a public thing that said that St. Charles had fallen apart and they were looking for a new home. I, I think Sedalia would be the best home for them, I mean, and I think we need to make that proposal.
Well, I was under the impression that sixty-five, seventy, before St. Charles got involved, and then, then they moved it, and then that fell apart.
Yeah. And so, so regionally, it makes a lot of sense, uh, if, uh, for Sedalia to be involved. I think they, they want to, you know, they want to pull the Malta, out at Malta Bend, they want to try to pull it out in one piece, you're not going to be able to move it too far, they want it, they want it in our heartland, and short of being on a river, I think it ought to be in Sedalia, it could be next to the State Fair, you know, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of positives for them, and we'll, we'll make that presentation for them.
High quality and diverse housing, you know, again, compared to surrounding areas, we have a lower owner occupancy rate, but again, I think that's in, when you look at it in single-family housing, is where that, that trend is coming from. And then the lower average home values to include, not being exactly, but, but then that's exactly that. Uh, the housing shortage of, uh, the White Men area Leadership Council Housing Study basically came back and says we, we need about six hundred and fifty houses just to replace the unlivable houses that are, that are, that are down, and then another two hundred and fifty to support the growth that they see over the next five years. So very close to a thousand houses that we need right now. Missing middle housing, the multiplex, the density again spreads the infrastructure. We want to turn rental of single-family into owners and then stabilize and strengthen the neighborhood character. The, uh, continuing with the diverse housing, the code enforcement tone and tools, you'll see some of that, the demolition and the three fifty-three funds in your, in your ranking. Um, and then we talked earlier about the continued proactive approach, and then also using the, the carrot approach, the, and then USDA grants and loans, the three fifty-three advancements and direct redevelopment, the redevelopment infilling annexation, the balance approach. Uh, we want, we need, we know we need to do, uh, the infrastructure has to grow while the growth provider moves forward. So as we expand the, the geographical area, we know that we have to add things like fire stations, which are expensive, but at the same time, they have, they have to grow together. You, you know, it's not a, you build it and they will come, you have to build it as they are coming. So, uh, it has to come at the same time. Water and sewer, the arc housing that we've been able to, to utilize here to, to help in that area, and then working with our other utility partners, you know, making sure that there's enough gas and enough electricity in the area, the, the street curbs, gutter and sidewalks, the CBBG, uh, funding and the, uh, economic development funding that we've been able to, uh, secure some of those grants, which are a huge help to, to push us forward. And then develop the transitional housing. Um, and, you know, that's where I think, you know, we, we want to look at, or I think we should look at the top-of-home concept, that, that type of project, and make that part of the three fifty-three, or encourage some other developer to do it. I don't say that necessarily the city needs to be involved in that, but I think that that can be as part of the answer. Um, and then the housing authorities, their, their. The transportation and infrastructure, the, we want to first of all separate industrial from commercial and residential traffic. That is the biggest way to improve our traffic flow, and of course, the wayfinding helps in that, helps in that area, so that's why it continues to be on the, the ranking there to try to push that forward if we can, if we can identify the, the allocation of funds. Brenda mentioned the SAFRA grant, or not SAFRA. Brenda mentioned the safer grant, or not safer, what's that grant?
That's 4A.
That's that 4A, Brenda. To do studies on figuring out how to make our streets safer. The complete streets that we've talked about, that, you know, as again, the motorist bicyclist and pedestrians, the 16th Street, the 3rd Street, the Ohio, the 24th and Evans and New York and Engineering, where, engineer, where we currently have the CBVG grant set aside to help us with that.
Make, make clear on 24th. Is 24th, when we say 24th in that plan, I can't remember, does it include Clinton Road down to 24th when you're coming from the west, or is it, how did that corridor work, Brenda? Or did...
They got one more time to count.
So if, if you're on Clinton Road and you're coming east, come off 65, I always have in my mind that 24th Street corridor included Clinton Road down to 24th where it runs into, down to 24th where it runs into 24th there, close to the Lum Yard, the concrete plant, right?
The, the project that we had here was to put a three-inch surface on Clinton Road as it runs from 32nd Street all the way past both the concrete and...
To Grand.
Up to Grand.
But, so is that getting part of that 24th Street corridor or not? That's, that's my question. So 24th, I just don't think that's a good name for that corridor, because 24 stops on its west end, way short of Highway 65. 24 stops...
I, I'm not...
I'll take, I'll take you out there.
That may be what was made.
It's probably not confusing anybody else.
I think it's the comprehensive plan that made it the 24th Street corridor. It wasn't the street or grand, it's just...
We call it the 24th Street corridor, but it goes all the way to 65. Okay, well, we'll look at it.
But, but as far as what they didn't see, to Grand, from 20th back to 32nd, the City Limits, it's the way until we replace the water.
Yeah, I know.
And then...
The water lines are queued up, right? Would that help them? Yeah, hold that right there. Yeah.
The red on there is too small, potential complete street that they identified.
I didn't bring my glasses.
Here's your light.
Here's Barry's glasses. Oh, those are terrible. They're not my prescription. They're, they're not terrible, Bob, they're wonderful. They wasn't mine.
They're both made by...
Yeah, but 20, yeah, okay, so I think, so now looking at this, I think I see what I'm seeing correctly, is, is...
Is he wearing a magnified glass?
65 and 32nd is right here, and this potential complete street is 24, starting in front of Lum Yard. It's, that, if it's a, if it's one of our federal fairs, we should incorporate Clinton Road as part of 24th Street all the way to 65.
I know what you're saying, except completely not related.
Because right now, that 24th Street doesn't make it to 65 Highway, and there's no real, and it is, whether we do it or not, it's a corridor, believe me, coming from that 32nd Street intersection, 32nd and Lemon Avenue.
It's, it's familiar, but come, we have it marked as an arterial on Clinton, so Clinton Road to 32nd to 24th, trunk is in Clinton.
I understand, but the vast majority, I, I live right there, the vast majority goes right past 24th Street, down to Grand, and then down to Grand, through traffic.
I, I agree.
Okay.
Steve, part of that thought process behind the complete street was, was connecting all the park system with the complete street that was walkable and bikeable between the walk system, which goes into, maybe she's not here, but her strategic plan where you wanted to be able to walk, oh no, sorry.
She's in Cogito today.
I didn't even know, I looked over there and I did, it's the alley. So that, but to be able to walk between parks, a 10-minute walk between parks, that, that was part of that, that is this whole like...
Okay, the, the reason that too is bothering me is because I want, Brenda to have as much ammo as she can, or I'll have as much ammo as we can, dealing with the state to get that intersection improved at 32nd and 65. So if that street, I don't want that plan semantically to get in the way of our arguments with the state with regard to getting this done. Okay, I'm done. I guess. What are you smiling about?
It's it for the moment.
So the specific development strategies that we talked about are, that were given the comprehensive plan, where the Katy Depot, the old settlement site, the 16th store corridor, street corridor, the old rival site to the, to the fairgrounds, trying to create that into more of a commercial corridor there, residential expansions north and, and southwest. And then again, we're using, utilizing arcus to get water and sewer infrastructure out to both areas. And then as, we added 20th Street as part of that after the comprehensive plans, the Grand and Limit there, the, that area for development. How they all fit together, there's again, the common theme of maintaining desirable environments, a customer value focus, there's a lot going on, game changers, we want to keep a watchful eye of the economic, economic conditions changes. Again, the recession is coming, I don't want to harp on that, but the treasury curve, as I mentioned earlier, is the most inverted since 1992, and the standard 4500 was the worst experience for the last year since the Great Recession. I just can't tell you when it's coming and how, how deep it's going to be. I just believe that it is coming. Priorities, we want to set priorities, we want to, and, and I, I know I harp on this a lot, maintaining focus, that is the key to success. You gotta, you gotta keep focused on where we're going, how we're going to get there to be successful. Keep the perspective of the overall strategy and how the pieces fit together, you know, it's very easy to get fragmented and moving in this direction versus that direction, and, and lose sight of where we're going longer term. The culture, the mindset, and I won't harp on this too much, but, you know, the government, like a business, has to focus on their customer and their shareholders. If you don't, they will be customers or shareholders of some other organization. We need to bank clean, if it doesn't add value to the, to the customer, it is waiting. And it, and it's not only adding value to the customer, they have to perceive that as value add. We must think longer term, must think citizens, our, our customers are not guaranteed, and therefore the revenue that they generate is not guaranteed. And then, like a business, we need a clear identity to market to our customers and our shareholders, that, that they can rally around, so therefore we need to build on the brand that we are creating, and that is a constant effort, it's not a, again, it's a journey, not a destination. You are always building your brand and always strengthening your brand. So with that, I will leave you with, with this piece here that I pulled from SBR, Strategic Government Rewards, a piece that they put out called "A Legacy That Matters." And I'll let you all read through that as you're leisure there, but it, it does, I thought, was very good to put in, in this time here, timeframe where we're talking about, you know, you all as elected officials and, and all of the leaders of the community of, of, of how to leave a legacy that matters and what's important. With that, I know we're behind time, but I made up a little bit of time, and I would say that we are ready to start the scoring process or the ranking process, unless somebody has something else that we wanted to...
The partner here, do they have...
Did you all get here all ranked?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm not like that. Don't have any random...
Can you just share that? All right. Anybody else? Simon, Derek, you got anything? Airport, you got anything? Saying what your number one priority would be out of, of scoring within your department? Probably what? I'm sorry.
Stay with me, I just flipped.
You got anything?
How important is the hanger lining? Versus the, the fuel farm, should that score higher? Upgrading the fuel?
Make sure that's the day.
Okay, I think I'm...
Your official order to come back.
And they got that low lead, uh...
I'll give you the back seat.
Why do I ever get ranked anywhere? I never...
Yeah, everybody, if we, if we... Just to make sure that everybody's doing the same, so like, for example, on the general fund, you have 1 through 17, so your highest priority would be 1, your least priority would be 17, so you would rank them all 1 through 17, so. And then when you go to the next page there, transportation, it's 1 through 7, so again, your top priority is re-investment would be number 1, and your lowest would be number 7. And then on the final, on the capital improvement, it's 1 through 11. And I'm handing you out control team.
This is also next one.
So if you want them, if you recorded on the ones that, that I've given you, whatever you have.
So you still want to make sure to get fuel for generating money, so I mean, that's very...
Hey Brenda, on the, the Clinton Road 3-inch overlay, on the Clinton Road 3-inch overlay, was that just, is that our fruit, is that, or is that contract that I... If that's our fruit, so it's official.
Oh, okay, okay. Is that enough for the equipment that's driving on that road?
Right.
I mean, you've got cement trucks and farm equipment. Oh, I don't know, okay, 3-inch. Hey, tell me, how come the letter...